Might go so far as to suggest changing the bylaws to just make the Budget Officer the Chair. But, that's a future item.
Okay. All in favor? Let's see, so Gabe, you're not on this board and neither are you Greg. Oh, he is? Oh, he is. So, you're not on it though Greg, right? So, we got five to zero. Sorry, Gabe. I don't remember. And, next Vice Chair. Sorry, I'm chairing and taking minutes at the same time. And you seconded, Gabe?
Yeah.
Discussion? All in favor? Passes five to zero. And, now Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we nominate Elaine Gisler as Vice Chair.
Is there a second? Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Passes fi- or passes four? Those opposed? Are you voting for yourself or not? Yes? Five to zero? Alright. Passes five to zero. Okay, approval of the minutes for October, uh, or hold on, let's see. It's actually approval of the minutes for January 21. Oh, sorry, you're right. Approval of the minutes for, uh, October 15. Joint meeting with County Council postponed from October 24. And approving minutes of Oc- October 24, 2019. So, there's two, right?
Right.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I will, I make a motion to approve the minutes from October 15, 2019, and October 24, 2019.
Second? Elaine? Any discussion or corrections? All in favor? Okay, 4-0-1 with, uh, Whitetek Epstein. Ruth does a good job of getting every little detail. Okay, now, uh, next up, we have, uh, interview of citizen applicant for a term ending December 31, 2021, followed by possible recommendation to, uh, the County Council. And so, we've got one, uh, citizen applicant for the Budget Advisory Board, um, who is Zach Wyczeczek. He's on the phone with us. And so, by, uh, ordinance, we have to interview all applicants for our boards. And so, this is your opportunity to ask Gabe any questions, if you have any.
What's that?
Okay, Zag, this is Jaylen, I have a question for you. Can you hear me?
Uh, a little bit, you might, you might need to move the phone a little bit.
I'll just move me.
She's coming.
Okay.
So, Zag, you've served on the board since its inception. Is there a reason why you would like to continue, sir?
Um, I feel like it's really good for the, for the community members to understand what's going on with the, with the upcoming expense budget. Um, I feel that since I'm more, I'm, I'm in the community but not in, in elected, well, paid position or elected position. But, um, I think it's good that I have the capability to share information with, uh, with other members in the community. And I enjoy that.
Thank you.
Sold me. Any other questions? Alright, do we have a motion to, uh, recommend Zach Wyczeczek to the Council for the appointment as the citizen on the Budget Advisory Board? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Okay, carries five to zero. And that concludes our business, so we'll adjourn this Budget Advisory Board meeting at 3:55 PM.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Zag.
Much, how are you? Guess what I did?
Uh, what?
Lost all the receipts from my cell phone.
Oh, guess what's gonna happen? I'll get paid for it all.
What did, uh, what did I call it? Well, just call them. Like 99% of the time, you know, when I have one of them, I call them, they, I didn't know. They're all like shocked when I call them.
Well, yeah, I mean, the issue is that, um, I mean, we can, there's very low threshold for not being able to count with the public.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So, if I just, uh, wait now, you said?
Oh, you're, you mean if everybody just got one pass, we would look at that threshold so far, it would be impossible.
Oh, well, well, every time I thought the C was on.
So, there, we just, so that's one thing. Maybe if there were no, everybody has to have a receipt.
So, they pay for it?
And they'll probably have to get it by, so.
That's why I signed up for this.
Good.
You gotta at least let them play. You gotta try to play well.
Oh, yeah, we were over there in the Sheriff's Office trying to get our signature to our eyes, the best work to like, I said, they were the ones. Chris taught me that bike, and we said, this person was fun.
Oh, yeah, um. If you just go over, you just, just tell them that you want to, and they'll get, um, but, yeah, we've got, like, we haven't mentioned, like, um, yet.
Yes, yes, yes. Not expire after the end of the year. Oh, wait, what?
I'm Vice Chair.
Yeah. Uh, he actually goes to school in Colorado.
No. Yeah. He goes to important schools, they do stuff all the time.
I will call this order, this, uh, Grand County Council meeting, special meeting to order. Uh, it is Wednesday, March 4th, 2020. Present are Councilman Greg Halliday, Councilwoman Jaylen Hawks, Councilman Evan Clapper, uh, Councilman Gabriel Whitetek, Councilwoman Mary McGann, uh, Clerk Auditor Gwen Hall, and, uh, our, and Chris Baird, who will be serving as, uh, County Administrator. And, uh, Curtis Wells will be arriving around 15 minutes late, and, uh, Roy Taxman will not be here tonight. Thank you. We would like, I have the wrong agenda. No, no, Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, uh, Joe, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Would you follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizens, uh, citizens to be heard, this is the first opportunity. Seeing none.
So, Mary, do you want to, well, do you just want to describe the new process that we have so everyone understands?
We've got comments on our citizens to be heard portion of our agenda. With Moab's, uh, employment, a lot of people work during the day, but there's also a lot of people that work in the evening. So, what we're going to do is we're gonna have two opportunities for citizens to be heard. The first one will be at the very beginning of our meeting, so people will know when it happens and not wonder when we finally get to it. And then, at 6 o'clock, or as close to 6, when we're between agenda items, we will ask, give everybody another opportunity for citizens to be heard. We are dismissing or getting rid of the cards where you speak on the agenda item. So, if you want to speak on an agenda item during citizens to be heard, that is fine. Or you can just speak on something you want us to hear about. So, we've changed that, and this is the first meeting that we've implemented this new change. I hope it goes well. Okay, uh, approval of minutes?
So, were there any citizens?
I asked.
Okay, none?
Approval of minutes? Jaylen?
I move to postpone the approval of minutes, February 18th, 2020. Joint City-County-Castle Valley Meeting, and February 18th, 2020, County Council Regular Meeting.
Motion by Jaylen Hawks to postpone, seconded by Greg Halliday, discussion.
So, there was none, none get in the packet? You sent them on, right, Quinn? Yeah, so they didn't make it in the packet? Okay, I guess that was oversight. Um, I'm pretty sure that Quinn sent them to you. But, uh, oh, well, we'll postpone. They're drafted, so we'll just get them.
They're drafted, just not?
Didn't make it in the packet.
Uh, here. Okay, uh, no, any further discussion? Yes, Greg Halliday. Seeing none, uh, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Council Administrators Report, Ruth Dillon, Acknowledgement of Department Heads.
Okay, before I call the department heads up here, I just want to say, tonight is my last meeting, not my last day. My last day's not till Friday, the 13th, with the Retirement Party in this room on the 12th, open house between 4 and 7. So, I still have a few more days here, um, and hopefully Chris and I will find some time. Um, the election kinda took us over, but, um, I, there have been more than 400 meetings in my 12 years when I moved here to Moab that I have participated in, or had something to do with, or was administrator in, or whatever, that's a, over 400. So, anyway, tonight is very special, uh, it is my last. And, uh, also, I have to leave early, I have permission from the Chair because I had a eye exam, um, that I couldn't get out of, and I'm not gonna come back with things being so bright, and my eyes being all dilated, and you guys wondering what drug I'm on, and so, anyway. Here we go, um, what I wanted to do, what I wanted to do is just, um, have the whole group of department heads come up. Why don't you all come on up with me, just stand beside me in any order. Um, there are a couple of them who couldn't be here tonight, and I wanted, I asked them, tell me, maybe just right here, right beside me, kinda like a long line of, one line of 10 of us? Alright, and you can face, yeah, you can face the audience. One single, single file, single file, please. Alright, so, uh, what I asked them to do is, is tell me what you're most proud of. Particularly under the time that I've been your supervisor, which has been seven and a half years. Many of them have been here much longer and had, have huge accomplishments before I ever arrived, and this isn't about me, really. This is about what they believe they're most proud of. And so, it's really interesting, their answers were very different than what I would've thought, you know? So, I wanna share that with you, and I also want to reflect back on some others that I have supervised in my last seven and a half years. So, first of all, uh, I have this acronym, Faces Glow Bright, they might not even know about it. This is how I, in my mind, how I manage who's who. So, Faces is Facilities, we have a Facility Supervisor, A for Airport, C for Community and Economic Development, E used to be EMS, S for Sand Flats, so that was my Faces. Glow is Grand Center Library, Old Spanish Trail Arena, and the Weed Department. And Bright is Building, Road, IT, Travel Council. And then, the E is Executive Assistant, or also known as Council Office Coordinator. And to tell you the truth, I created that acronym for my boss when I first started working here for Grand County. And this has been my only government job, 12 years on the job, and so, I've really loved it. Uh, anyway, I'll save my goodbyes for next week, but anyway, so Faces, let's start with Faces, so Facilities. Sean, you get to step up first. Alright, come over here. And, uh, what Sean says is, what he's most proud of is the, the Library Emergency Repair and Fix. I did have a lot of help from building inspectors, and I, I know he means the county building inspectors. My predecessor Marvin, and yours truly, on that project. He said the next most thing he's proud of would be the Moab Information Center reroute. It's so nice not to have to worry about that building leaking when it rains, and help give that building a little bit of a facelift. What you might not remember is that Sean was only on the job as a department head for two months when that emergency repair at the library happened. So, that was pretty amazing, and of course, the library did a beautiful job too, making sure all the books and everything did fine. So, I have a little, uh, gift for you, it is a memory card, and it's for the memories. Oh, it's such a ham. Okay, um, I'll let you sit down as soon as I talk a little bit about your predecessor, Marvin Day. You all remember him? He was here? He was a piece of furniture here.
He was.
He was here for 30 years, I think. Um, in my mind, one, one of the things I thought he did that was great was he achieved getting a, uh, CDBG grant, Community Development Block Grant. It was $125,000, you know, he will tell you it took a village to make it happen, but he oversaw that whole thing and the construction of our ABA compliance pathway outside the courthouse and the red guard railings that you see, so.
And the doors.
That's, and what?
And the doors.
And the doors. Thank you, and congratulations, I hope it's okay to shake hands, maybe we'll just love elbows. Okay, you may be seated. Go, Sean. Alright. Alright, Airport. This would be Andy Solzberg. You guys have just barely met him, but he's been kicking it for the last two months, really. Um, so what he says is, the opportunity, he said some nice things about me. The opportunity to have been hired, maybe I better get in front of this, because I'm always telling you guys, get in front of that mic. The opportunity to have been hired on with Grand County and work with a talented and dedicated staff. He's proud of that, he's proud to live and work in an area focused on the balance of hard work and quality of life, I would agree. The pleasure to have worked with, hmm, yours truly, albeit only a few months, and received some guidance during that time. The trust and freedom to take on the work assigned with the goal of taking the airport to the next level of operations, and feeling embraced by the community. He says he's happy to be here and feels that this is where he's supposed to be. Isn't that cool? So, before you get to sit down, before you, you met Judd Hill, and are working with Judd Hill, actually. Uh, and you also know his predecessor, Kelly Braun. So, Judd, what I wrote is that he oversaw the construction out at the airport, as you all know, in a very short time, that basically tripled the size of the airport, the terminal, and all those hangars, and the fuel farm. Um, he also was the first Airport Director to get us to that $1 million FAA subsidy because of having at least 10,000 deployments per year. So, Andy, aren't we 20,000 now already?
We are.
We are, so, we are, we are growing. Um, let's see, what else? Okay, and prior to Judd was Kelly. Kelly, um, he got that Wildlife Hazard Assessment and Management Plan going, because when you have deer and antelope and, I don't know what all out there, birds and everything, you gotta have a plan, and, and so, that was a federal requirement, but Kelly was the first to get it started for our, our airport. So, welcome and thank you, we are very proud. Alright. See, there's so many. Community and Economic Development Director Zachariah Levine couldn't be here. He wrote that he's most proud of streamlining and improving the development review process, 2017 Moab Area Housing Plan, that was award-winning, High Density Housing Overlay, also award-winning, Assured Housing Ordinance, the Moab and now Canulans Business Summit, uh, in that, building a foundation for economic development at large, mentoring three AmeriCorps Vista volunteers who are now leaders in their own rights, establishing the Act of Transportation and Trails Division of his department, tremendous amount of interdepartmental collaboration, maintaining professionalism, composure, and inclusivity of various perspectives through several highly-charged policymaking efforts. You might remember the highly-charged ones. Roughly $7.5 million in grant funding. And he says, "I think it's safe to say that we have increased public confidence in the county's Community and Economic Development Office." Not to mention, he is our first Economic Development Director in many years. So, that's Zachariah. Prior to him, we had Chrissy Killoy Braun, who married Kelly Braun during her work here at the county. Uh, what I remember about Chrissy is that she brought us the Colorado River Pathway in terms of overseeing the construction of that along the Colorado River, Highway 128, and also up Moab Canyon along 191, and that was a big deal to oversee all that, and the elevated bridges. And then, uh, okay, so that's, that's Community and Economic Development, let's give them a hand. Alright, so now we're FAC, now we're at the E of Faces. E would be for EMS. For several years, I, um, supervised Andy Smith, and, um, you may, may not have been here, you guys might not have even been here when he was fighting to have paramedics, which was a step, a big step, actually, above EMT intermediates. And he, it took him a good while, and he finally got that support. Uh, and also, of course, for creating the Special Service District. All of this, of course, none, none of this really could've, could've happened much without you guys, County Council, and your predecessors. But I do want to say, I think that is something to be proud of, to create a, a whole Special Service District. So, EMS is no longer here under the county. So, that's, uh, FAC-E, now we have S, what would that be, Andrea? Step on up, come on over. Sand Flats Recreation Area, Andrea Brand. She says, "I am proud of Sand Flats' many accomplishments under Ruth's tenure. A recent highlight was the production of the documentary film 50 Years of Slick Rock, and hosting the event, which honored Dick Wilson and Doug Wood. These gentlemen helped to create this famous trail back in 1969. This would not have been possible without the participation of some 35 members of the Moab community, and the dedication of the Sand Flats staff, stewardship, and event committee members, and the BLM. Other highlights include the recent passage of the Grand County Public Lands Ordinance, thank you, Council, major improvements to trailheads, trails, and campgrounds, top-notch educational materials, including brochures, kiosks, and video productions, and visitor surveys that continue to rate Sand Flats excellent for customer service and facilities. Sand Flats' visitation has doubled in the time Ruth has been here, and, oh, it's because of me. It's all about me. And despite these challenges, the partnership between Grand County and the BLM continues to be a model enterprise that others wish to emulate." And it is true, the, back, way before I was ever here, there was an award, uh, from Washington DC for this partnership between Sand Flats and BLM. "I'm deeply proud of how much Moab cares about Sand Flats, as shown recently in the community's opposition to the proposed leasing of parcels for oil and gas development on Sand Flats property. I feel both proud and privileged to be the Director of Sand Flats and to help take care of this treasure place. Somebody's guidance helped many of these projects to reach fruition, and I am deeply grateful." Thank you, Andrea. Now, I'm gonna get out of the habit of shaking hands. Okay, so that was Faces, so Faces get to sit down, here comes Glow, okay, Grand Center. Uh, she's not here, Verlaine, couldn't be here. Um, that pavilion that's erected behind the Grand Center, that is a result of Verlaine overseeing that work, it was a private donation, and, you know, she oversaw making it happen, so that was what I wrote for her. She didn't have anything specific she wanted to submit, so. Um, okay, so that's G for Glow. Okay, Library, we have, come on up, Carrie Valdez, the Director. "Over the last eight years under Ruth's direction, I have worked really hard to make our library as inclusive as possible. With the support of the Library Board and my staff, I have..." With the support of the library board and my staff, I have identified and eliminated as many institutional barriers as possible. Institutional barriers are those things we do ourselves that make it difficult, if not impossible, for all members of the community to use their public library. I recently wrote an essay that is being published by the American Library Association, and I've shared my message of inclusion with numerous other librarians at professional conferences. I actually attended one of those with her at Richfield. So she tells the truth. I would not have been able to advocate for equitable library service without somebody's support. Okay, thank you, library. Thank you, Carrie. All right. So that's the G and the L. Now we got the O for Old Spanish Trail Arena, Steve Swift. So Steve says, as for achievements, I can't think of any one thing that stands out for me over another. They're all little things. And I would say there's jillions of those, but I'm going to add to that. Overseeing that construction of the ball fields was quite a feat. That was after the Recreation Special Service District got the, almost $1 million grant several years back. But Steve comes from a construction background, so he naturally fit into that, and so he oversaw it. So thank you for that. Okay, bump, bump. Okay. All right, so have you guys figured out who's going to be the last one standing? Faces Glow Bright. Okay. Weed Department, Tim Higgs, G-L-O-W. We got Weed Department. Tim says, what he's most proud of is being able to serve on the North American Weed Management Association Board. He's also been able to serve on the North American Invasive Species Management Association Board. And you guys know, he recently received that lifetime achievement award from his peer of other weed supervisors in Utah. So congratulations, thank you, Tim. Okay, so we got Faces and we got Glow. Now we're on to Bright. So Building, come on up. And we've got two to go through. We've got Bill Hulse here, our newer director since last fall. He says, his predecessor had a plan for succession, and he's really proud of that. He says, way back when I was a young inspector, do you mean young like a new inspector? Okay. He says Jeff, referring to Jeff Whitney, started grooming me to take his place, instilling in me, well, wait a minute, I was the boss son who got the hire. Okay, grooming me to take his place, instilling in me his values and goals for the department. I too have started molding Cole Cloward for the future takeover of the department. By takeover, I don't think you mean that. Take over the department, ensuring that the county is in good and capable hands long after my happy day of riding off into the sunset. Mine's coming. Okay. In short, I am proud that my office had and will continue to have a plan for the future, ensuring that the institutional knowledge is not lost, and we continue to serve the county and its citizens with integrity, fairness, and a little bit of compassion. And before you sit down, so Jeff Whitney, his predecessor, he had a goal and he achieved it, to be the most certified building department per capita in southern Utah. And he wanted to be a one-stop shop for construction information in southern Utah. And between Jeff and Bill, they achieved having that happen. And we do, we are an educational source so that our contractors, our building contractors can come here, oh, actually, over at Utah State University, but to get their CEUs and so forth, and not have to go all over the state. And that's been going on for quite some time, and so thank you. Congratulations. Okay, we're getting there. Okay, Road Department, B-R-I-T-E. I, I take some liberty with how I spell Bright. Okay, so Roads and Bridges Supervisor, he gives me a general overview about what he's proud of in his job. Collaborating with the various county departments, land management agencies, state and federal agencies, Moab City, county districts, in order to move from a conceptual project or plan to a complete project has been satisfying to me. He says, working with the Road Department staff has proven to be satisfying as well. Many of the staff have worked together 20 to 30-plus years, each of them. Yeah, carrying out the mission of the department. Boots on the ground is where the rubber hits the road. Woo, that was his. All right. He says, in general, I am proud of the projects, road improvements, drainage improvements, and maintenance of the county's road system that has been accomplished. And a lot of that, you know, has been through different grants that he has overseen. Providing access and moving people and goods in a safe and reliable manner makes him proud, and he has done a tremendous job with that. Thank you.
I don't know, is it nice?
Kinda. I do appreciate Ruth's ability to, to check documents and dot Is and Ts and call you on it. Appreciate that a lot. And, but really, I appreciate some of the, we'll call them issues, that I've had the opportunity to deal with and to talk to Ruth about, and her guidance on that, although it was a little out of my realm of thinking. It got me thinking out of the box, you know, and really helped to kind of develop me on how I handle and deal with those kinds of situations. So I appreciate that.
You got it.
I can.
All right. Thank you, Bill. All right, so we are at B-R-I-T-E. Come on up, Information Technologies. Everyone knows Matt Sinoceros. He says, he is most proud that he's been able to centralize and consolidate the network and systems while improving efficiencies to staff and providing more up-to-date technology. He is the county's first IT staff person at all from 10 years ago, other than farming things out and making do. So he, he has a tremendous amount to be proud of, yeah, keeping us in the 21st century. You've heard me say that before. All right, well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Yeah, come on up, Travel Council. We've got, and we've got one predecessor of yours. So this is Elaine Gisler, as you all know. She is proud of, most proud of having received the 2017 U.S. Travel Association ESTO Destiny Award in the country. She says, our campaign beat out Lexington, Kentucky, and Kansas City, Missouri. Woo. She says, being approved by Governor Herbert in the legislature to be appointed to the Utah State Board of Tourism Development. She's most proud of securing over $900,000 in tourism marketing performance funds from the Utah Office of Tourism to support international and domestic programs. Recently launching the Do It Like a Moab Local Sustainability Program and the Moab Outdoor Adventure Guide to focus on sustainability, yeah. And then also recently being appointed an at-large director at the U.S. Travel Association and trip advisor, selecting Moab as the number-two trending city. Yeah, thank you. And stay, stay here with me, with Marion Delay. Oh, no, I forgot to write something down for Marion. Well, Marion was here before we had the extra TRT money. In fact, we had just barely gotten it, and that made another four and a quarter percent difference, is that right? I'm looking at Chris Baird, who was the council member there that brought it to fruition after it had failed back in 2009. So was it 2013 it became effective, if I recall?
I think so, yeah. It was a one and a quarter increase.
So she, she built the Travel Council in a way without that extra four and a quarter lodging tax. Yeah, so that would be the T for Travel Council. Thank you so much. All right. Let's see, uh-oh, we have an E. Oh, I forgot to give you guys your goodies each time. So serious. Ruth, you, Ruth, you can't leave. You have to.
I think after.
I'm not quite done. Okay. Sorry, so there is an E in the word Bright, the way I, and so that E stands for, well, when I first came here, the job was called Executive Secretary. It's now been called Council Office Coordinator. And so I would like to bring up Tara Collins, who is our temporary Council Office Coordinator. She, she has really stepped up, and she is managing the office. Here, I'm slipping out. Chris is busy over there with elections. She's, she's only been part-time, and only for about a year. And so she has just really stepped it up and, and is wrangling those packets and everything that goes in them and keeping the office running smoothly, all the annual tasks that go on way before you ever see them. That's Tara. So thank you. Oops. Appreciate you. Just real quickly, before Tara, of course, was Briny Chamberlain-Hill, who had all kinds of efficiencies, just all kinds of, including our server. And then Kaylee Welch before her, who developed a system for contract renewal automatically. Lastly, I just want to say to Chris Baird how much I appreciate and am so happy that you're my successor. When I became administrator, you were the chair of the county council, and you are, you were a big supporter of mine. And so it feels really good to be able to turn this over, so to speak, to you. And I know the county is in good hands. If the new form of government, a few years down the road, is a council manager form, which I hope it is, I think Chris Baird would be awesome, but that new body, whoever that will be, is going to have to determine that. But I think that's, I think we're all set in a very good position, and so that's all I have. Thank you, guys, for putting up with me.
We want to recognize you, Ruth.
Oh, you think so?
Stand up, please. You have given 12 years.
Oh, my goodness, flowers.
And has helped this county move in a very positive direction. It's been a privilege to work with her, and I think everyone agrees, let's give her a big hand.
Oh, thank you. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. And thank you again to all this, the council and to the prior councils who've really, it's your accomplishments that make this thing happen. All right. I gotta go.
Grand County Bills to be approved for March 4th, 2020. Total bills, $582,873.11. Total payroll, $239,026.23. Total bills and payroll, $821,899.34.
Motion. Motion by Gabriel Wojtek, second. Evan Clapper, second by Evan Clapper. Discussion? Yes.
I'm just curious about the transmittal register. There are a lot of numbers crossed out. I haven't seen that before, so I'm curious about what's going on there. But maybe it's just my copy.
What, do you have a page?
Well, it's the first page of, it says transmittal register at the top, council approval. It's like, oh, maybe six pages from the back is where it begins? Seven pages from the back?
Uh, I don't know, let me, I didn't see that. They didn't let me know I could go ask real quick.
Hold on.
Sorry. I'm 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 sorry.
Yeah, on the 19th, I attended the museum advisory board, looked at some of the, some of the exhibits, and we sat down and discussed preparation for opening of the museum. And then on the 25th, I, I went with my wife to the, to the
Open House?
Open House, yeah. Went, went with her to the Open House and looked at some, looked at some of what they have over there. And I want everybody, when they go over there, to look at my beaver pelt that I donated. It is my beaver pelt. Okay. Then on the 3rd of this month, that was last night, I attended the Castle Valley Fire Protection Special Service District Training Night. So I was able to attend that, whereas usual, I'm here and not there. So that's all I got.
Jalen Hawkes?
Okay. I went to, first of all, city council meeting. I went to hear about the parking structure discussion, as well as a discussion on the average number of square feet that developers have to build in employee housing if they're going to meet their obligation that way for workforce housing. It got very late, so I missed the last item. I went home before that one came up. But the first one, it was interesting, the one about the parking structure, because that discussion was tabled, very reasonably tabled, because there was to be a workshop. And, and that would be discussed at that workshop. So, but then I, I got the invitation, not the invitation, but the announcement in email saying, you know, workshop was happening, but interestingly, it's worded such that it looks like that has been taken off of the table for discussion that evening. It's very carefully worded to say we're going to talk about some, some dispersed parking. So that was interesting. Went to the AOG. They announced the successful applications for the CDBG allocation, which this year was a couple hundred thousand dollars more than it has been in the past, $708,000. And I was, it was interesting to note that Grand County didn't have any applications. And we usually clean up pretty well with that. So it was good to see other people get some money, I suppose. Also, we have four reps from southeastern Utah on the Governor's Rural Partnership Board. So that's exciting. I've gone to a couple of intergenerational poverty meetings, which you may recall are run by the school district now, because they have a dedicated staff person who is the, she's the community liaison, and this is, she's taken this on as part of her job. And kind of some exciting stuff. We're looking at partnering with Head Start. There is about $100 million in federal funding. It's competitive grant funding. Not, that whole 100 million does not go to this area, I do not believe. But it's allocated among eight regions, and then you can apply for the money. And it is to expand childcare. Head Start programs in childcare, nonprofits, and governmental entities can apply. So we are partnering, we're, we're trying to put the steps in place to partner with, when I say "we," it's the, the intergenerational poverty committee. They will, they've got a grant writer that they will write the grant. They also, I went to a grant planning meeting just yesterday. They also, Head Start up in Price has a modular that they can bring down to Moab. We just have to find land for it. So anyway, this grant could be huge if we're able to get it. We're starting small, want to expand childcare. I think you have, you can have eight in each classroom. I think we're going to try for two additional sets of eight. At the end of the day, staffing that might be an issue. So that's why we're starting small. But that's pretty exciting. HASU, Housing Authority of southeastern Utah, I just wanted to report, they are, as usual, very busy, juggling a lot of plates. And I wanted to report on vacant, or wait lists for their units. Cinema Court has 27 on the waitlist for one bedrooms, 21 on the waitlist for two bedrooms, and 13 on the waitlist for three bedrooms. They are ready to go forward with Wingate. They've had their plat recorded, working through the final phases of approving the first six families to do self-help housing there, mutual self-help, and searching for the next five people for the second phase. Planning Commission was my other meeting I wanted to report on. There is a discussion item on there that was interesting to me. You may recall, quite some time ago, there's a triangle of land that touches Plateau Drive, but it's mostly on the highway. The commercial part of that land, there's dorm style, well, not dorm style, but group style housing for, I believe it's Western River. And then they have a warehouse as well. There's a lot of land down in the gully. And originally, I had heard through Grapevine that that would, you know, be either tiny homes, or I think it's changed several times. But my understanding was always that it would be local workforce housing. And this discussion, I went to Planning Commission, it looks to me like, to make a pencil out, these developers want to make roughly 50/50, about 79 units of overnight rental, and 77 units of workforce housing. So that wasn't an act, they didn't vote on it. It was just a discussion item to take the temperature of the Planning Commission and see what they thought about it. I don't know if they're going to go through with that application, but something to watch for. And that's all I have.
Evan Clapper?
The end of the month is always kind of slow for me. The big news is I made it up to Salt Lake during the session. I was able to meet with Albrecht, because I, he was first on my list. I didn't want him thinking I was sneaking around behind him up there. But then I also met with Watkins and Higgins and Lincoln briefly, and even ran into Des Barker, who I met for the first time. And we had a hallway conversation. Obviously, House Bill 280 with the TRT revisions was high on my list. I didn't really go to the mat with anybody over it. It was just kind of expressing our stance and kind of what we had discussed in the meeting and requesting it went back to the original version. But I wasn't making a big stink up there, because things were already rolling and it already passed initially. And so it was, the timing of those things are always tricky. But I also got in some discussions about EMS and some potential bills and funding, specifically the ability for them to apply for grants. And also the equal rights amendment. So there was something I was just kind of poking them about and encouraging them to support. Besides that, I just got to ride the new trail in Sand Flats. If you remember, that was the trail formerly known as the Big Burrito, that was in litigation for a long time and held up on getting approved. That got built and had a soft opening this week. It's Sand Flats' first non-motorized wheeled trail, if that makes sense. And it's a great addition to the trail system. And kudos to the old trail mix, the new department. Matty and Tyson did a great job up there. Got to meet some of the techs with their hands dirty, and it rides really well. So you should go check it out. It's called Falcon Flow. They didn't want to confuse it with too much Mexican food names. So it's no longer, it's the trail formerly known as the Big Burrito. It's Falcon Flow. It's one section of larger.
Curtis Wells?
Well, I'm going to report on the mosquito abatement district meeting that was held Monday evening. Just some information, the snowpack is at 105% of the March 2nd average, which indicates a peak river flow of about 26,000 CFS. It's likely to increase. Last year at this time, the snowpack was at 152%. Mosquito district is dealing with some staffing issues. That we've got some seasonal full-time positions to fill. And they're just really getting ready for the season. But things look to be on track. And I think after last year's, you know, issues, there's a heightened sense of getting out ahead of things this year. So excited, and, and I've got some confidence in, in the preparation that they're doing for the season.
Gabriel?
No reports today.
Okay. I have a fairly large report about my trip to DC. I want to bring up my team. Joette Lankinies and Ronnie Terrell. We went, we flew to Washington DC on, we flew to Washington DC on Monday. We had 22 meetings on, between Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and flew back on Friday. Very successful meetings. And I owe it a lot to these ladies. I mean, Joette is our historian, and also she just knows a lot of the ins and outs of how things work and how they've worked in the past. So she was able to answer questions that were beyond my ability to answer. And then Ronnie was this incredible scribe that kept us on track. When we had to reschedule, she would make sure we remembered to reschedule. She took copious notes. And then when we would forget something important during our presentation, she would always speak up. So it was very successful. Do you guys have anything to share? Or do you want to see the presentation first? I shared.
Can we turn down the lights, Ruth? This was 2001, before we started moving the tile. You can see how large it is. Pretty large. And that said, in 2018. I put those in because they were from the same angle. I couldn't find one recently that was from the same angle. And we, we went there to talk about the importance of continuing funding at $45 million. And they think for that money, they encourage them to keep the funding at that level. This is what we brought up, is that because of our $10 million extra dollars that they've given us, we doubled the amount of payments moved from 460,000 tons to 920 tons annually. We take a minimum of seven years off the project completion date, which is expected to be 2027. We save the taxpayers over $150 million. That's easy to figure, because if you took what they had worth of funding as we started this process, it was 35. You multiply that by 20. You multiply 150 by 10. It's pretty easy to figure out you're saving a lot of money. And that's not even counting inflation. So that's a lot of money. It will reduce the long-term risks and bring the community closer to its potential. So just so you guys know, this is the first year ever that the President's budget, $45 million, actually took a little bit of the rest of the money. We never had that amount of money in the budget. In the past, we've always gone back and had to argue with the money, which we always lost. We never did, you know, substitute for it. So this is a great deal. But it's in the President's budget. But that said, really, there are implications tonight, because the budget doesn't end yet, because the legislators now start arguing for their projects. But the fact that we sit there makes the job of our congressional folks, blocking the spending, always there. And we continue to be there, and think that we'll end up having a project that only costs a few years. So what we have decided is that we're going to start focusing on the long, the longer the future of the site. Because if we actually did it in five years, we're going to, you know, take two, three years to figure out how to transport it, if we want to transfer it, hopefully, in that county. But that's a process. So we're going to start figuring and learning what that process is, and then start working towards that. Five years will come, two, four years. So this shows when we, before we got to $10 million, how many tons were moved. And then in 2019, it increased to over 16,000. And we didn't get to get up and running until February, because of the number. It's, you know, to get the infrastructure, to get the people hired, it just did not happen. So that shows how much does it really increase. The exciting thing is it's brought down the cost. So the cost per ton in 2017 was over $75 a ton. Now in 2020, it's expected to be under $150. So the legislators are very excited to see this, because so rarely can you say we gave money to this project and have showed such results. So they were very excited about that. And they did it with very little money increase. So with that short amount of increase, we've been able to double the amount of payments. So it's pretty exciting. We're very, very happy about it. And I would just show you the people we met with. We got to meet personally with John Curtis, Senator Romney, Senator Lee, Representative, oops, that's Bishop, I should say. Oops, I should say McAdams, Senator Adams. And then we met with Ray Gepol, how do you say it? Then Politan. We met with those people, and personally, the rest of the people we met, they just looked at us. But they were very, you know, every one of them, the fellows, were asked about their experience. We were happy, we were happy about those patients, and those people were asking someone. We were actually appreciative of this, showing them. And then we met with Ike Floyd. He is the OLE Secretary of Environmental Management. So he's the big guy over all projects, such as our hunting project, plus all those major groups of staff that we did with when we were at the park. And I'm showing you this. I know I brought it up, so I can show it, touch, touch, like. But yeah, I highlighted that it's 70, we put the budget off, there's been a $47 million instead of 45. And it is the only project that has gotten an increase. All the rest have gotten a decrease. So our love, please, I think our love and efforts are truly invaluable. Thank you for your support. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm super tired. Well, we were exhausted.
Does anybody realize how much more we can get if you open that door? That came up. People in the community know, unless you've done, you know, there's a lot of work that's worth, works that we do.
I was going to ask you guys, like, if you put together a narrative report for my council, are you doing this here, each PowerPoint, and then the whole house is scheduled, and the listeners can remember, and a lot of information, and points is now, like, how these, and then we're not really copying it, but.
I mean, did people do one button, the button over there? Senator Romney, you guys, it's easily to work, you know, other than you know.
Only 45 people a day get to go.
Yeah, because they got to go out, and it's rusty, and it's a clock, and you know, we're outside, waiting for the statue to be.
320 steps up.
22 stores.
I'm going, just, we had just run all over the place on marble floors, and then we agreed to climb 300. I thought I was crazy, but we did it. It was worth it.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, thank you.
I also met with Solid Waste Special Service District. And every time we meet, our director, Evan Terrell, has figured out another way to expand the lifespan of Moab landfill. So that's very good news for the citizens of Moab. That's going to save us a lot of money. So, thank you.
We can turn on the lights. We have elected officials' reports. Clerk Auditor, do you have anything to report?
No.
We have Christina Zsa? No? Okay. Treasurer's report.
I'm trying to get it up.
Well, I'm having technical problems.
a report on the 2019 property tax collections, also investments for the county, results from 2019, and an update from my office. So we'll start with the 2019 property tax collections. And I think the big story from 2019 is that the, is about the tax collection rate. The collection rate is the ratio of the taxes charged versus what we're able to collect in the current year. And the reason that we care about this, and that I talk about it every year when I do this report, is that the collection rate is used by the Tax Commission in the following year when they determine the tax rates. And the reason they do that is that the state is saying to the taxing entities, we know that you're going to ask for this much money, but you're only going to get a percentage of it. We know you're not going to get everything you ask for. So we're going to allow you to ask for more, so that what you actually get is closer to that budgeted amount that you need. So they take the, the tax collection rate and use that in their calculation. And the higher the tax collection rate, the lower the tax rate that will result in the following year. And so in 2019- And so in 2019, we achieved a tax collection rate of almost ninety-seven percent, which is the highest rate that we've seen in Grand County for the last thirty-four years, possibly longer. That was the farthest back I could find records on the collection rate. So the graph that's up right now shows the collection rate for each year from 1986 to 2019. And you can see that over time, it's been increasing, but that in nineteen, we surpassed the ninety-six percent and got almost to ninety-seven. So this graph shows the, a five-year average from the previous five years of the collection rate. And the reason I'm bringing this up is that that's the actual statistic that the Tax Commission uses in their calculation. They use a five-year average so that you don't have quite as much volatility from individual changes from year to year. But you can see the same general trend in the graph. You can also see that from eighteen to nineteen, there was a significant increase in this five-year average. That is, in fact, the biggest increase in the five-year average that we've seen in this time period. And the reason that was so large is because nineteen was a good year with ninety-seven percent, the best year we've had. And the year that dropped off of the average was a, was a pretty bad year at ninety-three percent. So that made a big difference. So to put this in perspective, that increase that we're seeing there from eighteen to nineteen will result in charging the taxpayers one-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars less than we would have had the tax rate stayed the same as it was in eighteen. So it really makes a significant difference to the taxpayers in the county. And if we do a little bit of a thought experiment, you can see that over time, that five-year average has been going up steadily. If we, if we said, what if it had stayed at the 2014 level and had just not increased since then? Well, during that five-year period, we would have had to, we would have charged one-point three million dollars in additional property taxes just to reach those budgeted levels. So that is a direct savings to the taxpayers in the county because of the increase in the collection rate. But it's not just a positive thing for the taxpayers, it's also a positive thing for the taxing entities. And the reason is, if you look at this graph in eighteen, we've got about a ninety-five percent five-year average. That's going to be the, the amount that the Tax Commission used for nineteen. So they let us ask for about, you know, five percent more than we needed. But we actually collected ninety-seven percent. So we collected more money than we expected. So for the county's general tax rate, that was seventy-six thousand dollars in additional money that's coming in above what was budgeted based on the tax rate. And so that's going to be even more for the school district, and it's going to apply to all of the taxing entities.
Do you know how those two astounding figures, the collection rates, compared to other counties in the state?
You can, you can see the collection rates on the Certified Tax Rate website.
Have you ever looked?
Yeah, it's pretty good. Yeah.
Thank you.
That would be, that would be a fun thing to graph. Maybe I'll bring that next year. So we've talked about why the collection rate matters and how it's a win-win for the taxing entities and the, and the taxpayers. And now we can talk a little bit about why is this happening? I think if we look at this graph, the, the big picture answer is that the, the local economy has been improving. I think the economy before tourism and after mining was pretty depressed, and so people didn't have as much money to keep on top of their property taxes. And that's why we saw such low collection rates in the late eighties and early nineties. As the economy slowly improved, we've seen that go up. And the dips on the graph roughly correspond with economic recessions in, in the country in general. So I think that's the, the big picture. But there are some other factors that I think have helped us to push that rate higher in the last several years and to get us up to where we are now. One of those things is the focus that my office has taken on the collection rate. We realize how important it is for the taxpayers and for the taxing entities. So we're constantly looking for any ways that we can help to bring that up. One of the things that we've done recently in the last several years is really focus on our collections in December. Property taxes are due November thirtieth, but we still have the month of December to bring more collections in that get counted towards the collection rate. So as soon as the property tax due date passes and we process the rest of the mail that's coming in, we have started getting a postcard out to every single person whose taxes aren't paid. A delinquent property tax notice that lets them know their taxes are still outstanding and lets them know about the penalty and interest that are coming if they don't get it paid. In addition to that postcard, then we run some reports and try to identify which property owners owe the most tax. And I take that report and I start at the top, and I work my way down, and I do my best to contact directly each of those property owners through emails or phone calls. And again, just letting them know that their taxes haven't been paid, letting them know what interest and penalties are coming, letting them know that if they pay in December, we won't have to put them on the delinquent list that we have to publish at the end of the month. And I checked on our collections for the last half of December, and prior to taking those steps, we were collecting, on average, right around a hundred thousand dollars. But at, but since we started sending that postcard earlier and contacting people directly, that has almost tripled to three hundred thousand. And that increase of two hundred thousand is about one percent on the collection rate. So it definitely has made an impact. And most people are very appreciative of receiving that information. Sometimes the, the tax bill has just fallen through the cracks. Sometimes they're not aware of, you know, what the implications are. So I haven't had anyone upset with me about getting them more information about it so far. All right, so the next part of the story on the collections is about back taxes. And, and this has implications for the, for the overall collection rate, too. But in 2019, we did see a slight decrease in the back tax collection rate. But that was entirely due to three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars of back tax that we were unable to collect because it's in litigation from Union Pacific Railroad. So had we been able to collect that money, it would have been more like sixty-five percent, which you would expect with an increase in collection rate, that you're doing a better job on catching up on that stuff. The Union Pacific money, hopefully that litigation will, will get resolved soon. They actually paid their money, but it didn't come to the county. It got put into an escrow account due to a federal court order. So we're still kind of waiting on that to come through. So this graph shows, in just raw dollars, the amount of back tax that we've collected each year. And you can see that in nineteen, we did get a bit of an increase over eighteen. So this graph, I think, does a, a better job of kind of telling the story of what's happening with back taxes in Grand County. This shows, first of all, I, I pulled out the Union Pacific Railroad money, and I also pulled out the hundred-and-sixty thousand that Harley Dome owes. That is also uncollectible back tax because it's locked up in a bankruptcy proceeding. So when we, when we take out the, the taxes that we just don't have any chance of collecting, and then what I've done is I've expressed the back tax as a percentage of the prior year's total taxes charged. So the, the back taxes are weighted against how much tax we're actually collecting. And what you can see is that back in 2010, 2011, and 2012, we had almost ten percent of the total amount of taxes outstanding the following year. And now in 2020, it's down to about three percent. So the, the overall story here is that the burden of how much outstanding back tax, county taxpayers have is decreasing over time. And part of the reason I bring this up is that it's creating a positive feedback loop with the collection rate. Because when someone has back tax, that's their number one priority to get, to get that paid off. They want to pay it off to, because it's accruing interest every day, they want to pay it off because they don't want to have the possibility of their, of their property going to tax sale. So the, the, when someone has back tax, it really makes it difficult for them to pay their current tax. So the fewer people that have back taxes outstanding, the more people we've got who are able to pay their current tax. The more people that pay their current tax, the less back tax they, we have in the next year. So it's creating, again, that positive feedback loop and helping to improve the collection rate. So the next part of the story on collections is the increasing number of payments that we're, we're receiving electronically and that we're receiving automatically. This graph shows the raw dollar amounts of property tax payments that have been received electronically. You can see that it's just increasing quite a bit each year. We saw another nice increase in nineteen. We surpassed the two-million-dollar mark. And that means that we're collecting more than ten percent of the total property tax collections electronically each year. This is having a huge impact on my office. It's really decreasing our workload, especially in November. Every payment that comes in electronically is one payment that we don't have to process manually in the office. It's also a win for the taxpayers. For people who like to pay this way, it's much more convenient. You can get online and make your payment a lot faster than you can get out your checkbook and, and stamp an envelope. This graph shows just the individual number of electronic payments, pretty similar to the last graph as far as the, the increases. We did see a, a real bump in the individual number of payments that we received in nineteen. And part of that is because we have more people who are deciding to pay monthly throughout the year to break up that, that big tax payment into monthly pieces. And more, more and more people are starting to do that electronically. Part of the reason is that we do have an automatic bill pay system now so that you can sign up once, and it'll automatically pull the amount of taxes that you owe on a monthly or annual basis right out of your account. It sends you emails in advance to remind you to make sure that you've got money available there. But that's really been part of the reason we've seen an increase in electronic payments. And on the auto bill pay program saw a fifty percent increase in the number of parcels that were signed up for it in 2019. And I really expect that to continue. And you can imagine that the more people that sign up for automatic payments, the better the collection rate because it's very difficult to forget to pay your taxes when it's coming out automatically. The last thing I'll mention on this front is that we did introduce a new service for property taxpayers in 2019, which is that they can now go online and sign up to receive their property tax bill by email instead of through the postal mail. This has been an option for counties since 2014, when a law was passed to allow it. And we have been working on it during that time and have had a, a few pilot programs. But in 2019, we finally launched a full program that any taxpayer can go and sign up for. We had about eighty-three parcels that we actually sent emailed tax bills to this year. We had an additional sixty-three sign up after that. And I expect that program to just continue to see more growth over time. There's some real advantages to that program, but I do want to emphasize, it's only for people who want to do it. It's an opt-in system. Everyone's going to continue to receive their paper bill through the mail unless they go and sign up for this. But if you do sign up, you're going to get your bill a little bit earlier than you would through the postal mail. We're going to send these email notices first. It's more convenient for folks who are traveling, who may not get their mail, who may be worried about missing their bill. It saves resources, obviously. It's environmentally friendly. It costs the county less. There's less paper being used. Another great advantage is that when you sign up, you put in your email address where you're going to receive your tax bill, but then you get the option to put in two additional email addresses to receive a copy of your bill. So if you want your spouse to receive a copy of your bill, or your tax accountant, or anybody else who needs that information, it'll be automatically sent to them. And the last great advantage is that you also receive in that email, in the body of it, a link to pay your taxes online. And it'll automatically load what you owe and your parcels into the payment system, and you can make a payment right then. And if, if you own multiple parcels, it'll load all of them together for one payment. So it's, it can be very convenient, especially for folks who've got lots of parcels. I do want to note that I collaborated with our online payment processor to set this system up. They're actually the ones that are running the website and sending the emails for us. And so that has come at no cost to the county. We may eventually pay up to ten cents per email to send them out, but that is far less than the fifty cents approximately that we pay to print and mail them currently. Any questions on the property tax collections? Yes, Jalen?
So on the, the system you just mentioned, the emails, if a property owner has one property, but it's paid by two different accounts, can you do it that way, to split it in half, two different payment sources?
We don't have that set up to do automatically, but you could sign up and send a, a copy of the bill to that other person, but then you'd have to work it out together to pay half each, yeah. It's a good idea for the future, yeah. Any other questions on that? Okay, then we'll move on to the investments. So the story on the investments is, is still a good one for the, for 2019, but not quite as good as it was in 2018. And the, part of the reason for that is what we're seeing on this graph. The PTIF is the Public Treasurer's Investment Fund. It's where the vast majority of funds that the county holds is invested. And this is the, this is a graph of the interest rates going back to 2006. We can see that they were in the doldrums for quite a while, started to come up recently, but peaked last year. And they have started to come down now. So we are unfortunately not going to be getting quite as high an interest rate as we were. You may have heard as well that the, the feds cut the federal fund's interest rate by half a percent yesterday in an emergency meeting due to coronavirus fears, and that will also eventually depress earnings rates in the PTIF as well. This graph shows the total interest earnings to the general fund from our general fund PTIF account and from our investment with Zion's Capital Advisors, which I'll talk about in a moment. And we can see that we still had really historically great earnings in nineteen, but it did come down a little bit from eighteen. We do, like I mentioned, have some money invested with Zion's Capital Advisors. That investment actually increased from eighteen to nineteen. It's an investment that is in longer-term bonds as opposed to the PTIF, which is in much shorter-term investments. So the PTIF is going to respond more quickly to increases and decreases in, in the general interest rate, whereas that other investment is kind of a hedge against the PTIF. It diversifies us a little bit, and it doesn't get involved in quite as much of the volatility there. Any questions on investments? In your packet, there's a couple attachments that show what actual companies and investments we have with Zion's Capital Advisors and what the PTIF is, is invested in as well, if you're interested in some of those particulars. Okay, lastly, I'll just update you on a few other things from my office. I'm currently serving as the President of the Utah Association of County Treasurers, and in that capacity, I'm also serving on the Board of Directors for UAC. Mary and I are going up to the first Board of Directors meeting on Friday. I don't know exactly what the major issues are going to be for UAC this year. Usually there's some kind of drama, but we'll try to keep everyone informed about what's going on with UAC. I did attend the elected, County Elected Officials Day on the Hill back in January. It was a great opportunity to find out about the legislative issues that are facing counties this session, and the treasurer is also. the legislative issues that are facing counties this session, and the treasurer's also met with a representative who's helping us run a bill. It's a bill that's going to help to keep sensitive information that we collect from taxpayers private, including emails and phone numbers and personal financial information. We did just complete a, a big project in my office, which is moving out of part of our office and moving out of one of the vaults that are in our office to make room for the HR assistant position that is coming on and hopefully going to be hired soon. We're very excited to have a new office mate, and, but it was a lot of work to go through, many years of records and to get stuff consolidated, and I want to make special thanks to my Chief Deputy Debbie Littlefield, who took the point on that project. Even though we've gotten a lot done and have a lot going on with our office, we still have a pretty extensive to-do list and have more projects coming forward. I think, I'm very interested in making an update to the tax information search site that we have. It's been wildly successful, very useful, getting a lot of information out to folks, but it's time to hopefully increase the historical information we've got there, make the search a little bit more user-friendly. I'm also working on some internal processes in my office, hoping to digitize and streamline our abatement application process. We're also working to upgrade our property tax accounting system and integrate it more closely with what the county's already using. And, lastly, like I mentioned, my office has really seen a big impact from some of these improvements and especially the efficiencies of electronic payments. So, we're actually looking for some more responsibilities to take on, because our workload's been decreasing with just the regular processing of property tax. So, we're hoping to work with some other county departments. Right now, we're in talks with the Assessors Office about potentially working with them to take on some of the billing and collecting of personal property tax, which they currently do. Their workload is increasing. They've got more and more vehicles to register. They've got more and more parcels to, to assess every year. So, we're hoping that we can work together and avoid them needing to take on another position in that office. Thank you for your time. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Very good work. Thank you. Council Administrator update.
So, the first thing I was working a lot with Quinn, and he made it through his first election, so that's great, and that went really smoothly. Just want to thank the Clerk's Office staff, and especially Janice Smith. She does the lion's share of the work to make sure that that runs smoothly. But, more importantly, I just wanted to update the council and also the public that myself, Steve White, the Sheriff, and Rick Bailey, the Emergency Management Director, and also other Sheriff's Office staff have been working closely with health officials and public safety officials around the community to prepare for the coronavirus or the COVID-19 possibilities. And, so, we're running through a lot of scenarios and getting ready to respond appropriately. And, so, I just also wanted to go over some of the, at, at this point, it's still considered low risk for Grand County. However, the Moab Regional Hospital has put out a few prevention, and we've probably all heard them a million times, but I don't know that anybody's taking them seriously yet, but I think that everybody should be. And, that would be get a flu shot, avoid close contact with people who are sick, cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue, then throw the tissue in the trash, avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth, clean and disinfect, frequently touched objects and surfaces, stay home when you are sick, except to get medical care, and wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Additionally, we've been discussing the possibility that somebody might become ill and then want to get tested for coronavirus. At this point in time, the protocol is that if you have not come in contact with anybody who's had coronavirus or visited a region that's known to have coronavirus, then you won't be able to get tested. And, if you're in need of medical attention, then you can just get an appointment with Urgent Care or your family practitioner. If you are experiencing flu-like symptoms and you have recently traveled to an area that's, that has coronavirus, or been in contact with somebody that has, they want you to first, if your symptoms are mild, call the Health Department at 1-888-374-8824. And, that's if you have had contact or been to a region where there's coronavirus and your symptoms are mild. If your symptoms are severe, and i.e. difficulty breathing, then the hospital would like you to call the hospital first before you go at 435-719-3500, and ask to speak to an ED nurse about, about your coronavirus concerns. They would like to prepare the hospital before you get there. So, please don't just show up if you've got severe flu-like symptoms and you've been in contact with somebody who's had coronavirus or been to an area that's known to have coronavirus. So, I'll keep everybody updated on that, on these things, and we're working hard to prepare ourselves and the community.
Thank you. Anything further? We are to department reports. Andrew, Airport?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair, members of council, staff, and public. Just a quick update that Rory asked me to provide to you. We have some Taxway Alpha and Apron Project kicked off on Monday. That will be, that will continue till early July-ish, so we're working on that and cranking away. The archaeology study, or project, will begin soon. We just have some paperwork to sign, and then he can get started. That should take about six to eight weeks. I'm also working on the minimum standards. I know that's been a big project for the last couple of years. So, the intent is to get that out to tenants and any other folks that want to review the minimum standards, provide feedback and comment by March 27th, and then, at which time, then I'll work with updating the document and then reviewing it with our county attorney so that we can hopefully bring it to May for adoption. So, that's the plan for that. And then, passenger employments, we were down 6% in January, but up 4% in February, so we're trending flat for the year. And then, our Airport Board Chair and myself will be attending the Utah Airport Operators Conference in St. George next week, and we will also be doing a site visit with SkyWest Airlines. So, looking forward to that. Other than that, any questions? Very good.
Okay. Update on High Density Housing Overlay, Unit-Based Sunset.
Hi there. I'm here for Zachariah said tonight. I'm also going to give Olivia's InkDev update as well, because she's not here. So, staff, just wanted to let you all know that we are approaching the sunset clause of the high-density housing overlay. You should see in your packet, you have a spreadsheet of the currently approved numbers of deed-restricted units. That also, that sheet also has the numbers that are currently in the pipeline, so the total on there you'll see is more than 300. So, we currently have 30 left, and we have enough projects to exceed the 300. So, the Planning Commission will be hearing three of those projects this, at their next meeting, and they will have the opportunity to vote to forward either more than you can approve or fewer. So, we just wanted to, to keep you in the loop and get you prepared for that discussion. I know Jalen also included a sheet explaining the rationale for the 300-unit cap from the previous discussions. So, if you, we just wanted to let you know. It's coming. Do you have any questions about that?
Would you mind just specifying real quick, when we're talking about reaching that, that number, and then sort of, there's some notes here about seeing how the projects come to fruition, operate over time, how they perform. Can you specify a little bit what that means in terms of what you're looking for?
Yeah. So, I think you're referring to the sheet from last year's discussion, possibly the, so, we, none of these projects have been built yet, and we were originally advocating for a unit cap to give the community time to see how this works out, basically. It's, you know, you'll see the rationale in there. It wasn't necessarily based on, you know, any like really hard and fast number, but we just felt like that was enough units that seeing them all, or at least some of them, come online would be helpful to know where we should go with the ordinance in the future and how that should continue.
And, so, I guess like, just after they're built and developed and we're monitoring how that, how that is working, are, what are the specific sort of details that we're looking at?
We don't have any set criteria for evaluation.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it was a new idea, and we just want to see how it plays out.
I think, right. And I, I thought-
Right. I guess I was wondering if there was anything else that was at the next level?
And monitoring the deed restriction. How are we going to be able to do that? How that's, how is that going to look? So, there's a lot of things we need to make sure works before we let any more come in.
But, that is, extending the ordinance is an option for the council, if that's something that you were interested in doing. Just to make that clear.
Cool.
Okay. So, the second thing that we wanted to let you know is, you should have already gotten invitation to meet with the Incremental Development Alliance. This is a not-for-profit organization that we are bringing to town using our funding from the Governor's Office of Economic Development for trainings. They work on small-scale and infill development, and their target audience is generally current small-scale developers, people looking to get into small-scale development, and then also staff and elected officials. So, we'll be having a session for the public, sort of a general information thing, aimed at people that, you know, might have, currently have an ADU, thinking about a duplex, something like that, on Wednesday night next week at the library from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And then, that same day in the morning, there is an elected officials session that you should all have already seen at 9:00 a.m. We would encourage you to come if you're interested. We're hoping it's going to be a good overview of policy that we could all introduce and use for, to encourage this kind of development. And then, there will also be a more focused workshop with current developers that already have some experience in the community, and that's going to be on Thursday. I think it's from 10 to 1. And, we, what was that, 9 to 12? 9 to 12, sorry. And, we will be, we'll also be meeting with them to talk about code challenges and things like that, that they can identify, where we can help support these kinds of efforts. So, that's the last update.
So, we have a total submitted of 386 units. We have a total approved of 338. The hard cap is supposed to be at 300. And, you're, and what did you mention as far as extending that? Are you referring to that additional 52 units? Is that what you're referring to?
So, that total, I believe, refers to the total number of units, not the total number of deed-restricted units. So, the cap is on the deed-restricted units at 300. So, currently, we should be at 270 for deed-restricted.
Okay.
And, that's an 80% of the total.
And, we've got 311, and so, what flexibility do we have to just approve all 311, or do we really want to draw that line at 300?
Currently, you don't have any flexibility. The way the ordinance is written, it's, it's done at 300. So, there would have to be a change to it to-
How many different applications make up that additional 41 units?
So, there's one larger application that's actually for 30, so that would take up all of the remaining units. And then, I believe right now, we are, we have two that are going to Planning Commission that are complete applications for, I believe, a total of five or six. And then, there are some more that are, that are being contemplated in the review stages that are also smaller projects.
Is that larger project, is it first in the pipeline? Is that expected to be?
No, there's no order. So, those, all three are going to be contemplated equally, the three that are coming up now.
And then, so Mary mentioned, you know, a big component of this is kind of where the Housing Authority fits in as far as managing the deed restrictions and those things. And, those are a lot of the questions that I get, you know, as far as what are the nuts and bolts, and how does that work? And, would you mind just kind of touching on that a little bit as far as where those discussions or where that process is at with the Housing Authority?
Yeah. So, that process is in process. We are having, we've got some conversations going with HSSU as far as who's going to be administering and how those are going to work. We're working on the actual template deed restriction with Christina right now, and that is probably almost, almost done. I don't know how far along you guys are.
We've worked through the contract with HSSU, the payment, all that stuff, and now we're working on the package of forms. And, the way it's being set up is they're going to do all the initial approvals, enforcement, compliance, annual compliance checks. Any issues, we'll get, we'll develop our own office. And, so, we're working through, coming up with this package of forms now, but it's really close.
Cool. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Update on House Bill 411 Negotiations Community Renewable Energy Act. Carly?
There. I have a, like a PowerPoint, but I don't know that my Surface is compatible, but I sent you a copy of the PowerPoint, so you can refer to that. Let's keep it here. So, my name is Carly Castle. I am Moab City's Assistant City Manager, and Zachariah asked me to come and give you a brief update on HB411, which is the Community Renewable Energy Act. As you recall, this legislation established a legal framework for communities serviced by Rocky Mountain Power to create a net 100% renewable electricity portfolio by 2030. 23 Utah communities have committed to this 100% renewable goal, including Moab and Grand County. Work that's been done in the past year since the bill was passed in 2019, it went through an administrative rulemaking procedure with the Public Service Commission, which then, I think, as I understand it, approved it to continue down this path as we developed some different agreements and applications. And then, each community that wants to participate passed a resolution by December of last year to sort of preserve that option to continue. So, just some brief updates on the next steps in 2020. Firstly, all of the communities who are interested in pursuing this need to get into a governance agreement, and there's a governance committee that is established to basically determine how we all make decisions together when we're negotiating with Rocky Mountain Power and the different regulators. This agreement will probably be an ILA. It'll determine things-
An ILA?
An inner local agreement, which might create itself a board of some kind. And, I think that's all still being negotiated. It's pretty early. It'll determine things like financial commitments, how we vote, how we make decisions, how we negotiate. The goal is to have a draft agreement by June 2020 and adoption by all the communities by August 2020. Then, we'll have to do, enter into a utility agreement with Rocky Mountain Power, and that will be all of us collectively entering to the agreement with Rocky Mountain Power rather than them entering into 23 separate ones. Additionally, a third-party consultant will need to be hired to help shepherd it through the Public Service Commission process. They evaluate it for things like feasibility, economic engineering, all those kinds of things. I don't think the state agencies have their own expertise, so they need to hire someone else. And, the cost for that consultant will be shared by the communities rather than the state or the, or Rocky Mountain Power. So, we have to get an idea of how we start thinking about cost sharing for that. And, also, in the meantime, we will need to develop each of us a low-income plan for each of our communities. This is required by the statute, HB411, and that will be part of, I believe, our application ultimately next year when we file it with the Public Service Commission. Any questions on that process?
Do you know who's on the Government Committee now?
The Governance? So, at the moment, it's just sort of all of us who kind of show up and want to discuss how to negotiate it. We've had two meetings. Mayor Silvestre with Mill Creek has sort of taken the lead- Um, Mayor Silvestrean with Mill Creek has sort of taken the lead and they have produced, I think, a draft I L A for us all to consider, just to react to. It's, um, really preliminary. And the next meeting is in two weeks. Um, so, like, I plan to bring an attorney and we'll just sort of hammer out some of those, uh, details. And I think we, then we'll determine level of involvement from all the communities. Who wants to be, if we are creating a board, who wants to be on the board? How do we administer, like, another public body? How do we work together when it comes? You know, it creates all of these open meeting, Zach requirements and everything. So, we all want to think about it long and hard before we necessarily go down that road. So, I, I believe Zachariah is in on those calls, but, okay, remember, there's another committee called the Technical Committee and he's definitely part of that one. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, who's, uh, are, who's doing the update on the transportation planning efforts? Do we have anyone? I have not heard that we were going to recall him. I did not get that message. So, I suppose we will postpone it until we have Zachariah here. Probably have someone here to, Bill's gone, right?
No, no, I think he was planning to call me, but.
Oh, well, we could call him then. Is he going to call? Do we call him?
Um, I'm not sure. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if he's still, uh, planning on calling.
Yeah, pull the slides up.
Pull the slide.
I think he was, he won't be able to just pull the slides. First, in the second. That's powerful, actually.
Where?
Do you want to?
Yes, let's try to get.
See if I can find that.
Oh, I was going to say, I've searched it. Should we, uh, should we, did he want us to call his cell phone?
I, I think he wanted you to just look at the slides.
Well, if we only have them in paper up here, then it's probably not going to be a very fruitful endeavor. Probably best to postpone it until he's available anyway, if we want to have any substantive, uh, discussion. But I think it'd certainly be worth it for the council to read these and get familiar with what information is in them.
Are we anticipating an upcoming action on this?
Well, they're, they're getting ready to act. There's, there's, uh, two, two big planning projects that are, um, getting underway right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seems so.
Yeah.
So, I, are, are we going to discuss this or?
I, I'm still trying to, uh, get a feel if we want to discuss it now or if we want to postpone it until we have them, so that we can put them up on the screen and talk about it so everybody knows what, where we're at. So, I thought I would just ask if you want to postpone it or discuss it now. Great. Postpone or discuss?
Yeah, postpone.
Uh, Jaylen?
I don't hear. If there's something useful to say, I'm happy to discuss it if there's not.
Am I included as part of the agenda item M? Or is that a one layer?
I have nothing to contribute of this, but if there's something that needs feedback, I'm happy to discuss it.
Curtis?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we can, I've got some, uh, I'd like to discuss it briefly right now and I think we should continue to, to discuss it as this, uh, develops. I, are you straw pulling to see if?
I'm just trying to get a sense, you know, as to whether we should. Since it's not an action item, we can't really vote on it. So, if we want to wait, postpone, or is there, uh, if, do you want to share what we wanted to? I'm sorry.
Well, so that, when I saw this, I was, it was kind of a head scratcher to me because, um, for a couple reasons. The, uh, I believe Zachariah had, had told me that the city manager had reached out to him to ask him to come present this to the city council. And the timing is coincidental because with this discussion of the downtown parking structure and some folks really pushing transit, the gist of the slide, I mean, is really coming across kind of negative to transit discussions right now. And this regional transportation planning process has been in the works for over a year. I attended meetings last year with Zachariah and, and UDOT and staff, uh, about getting this going. Who is going to contribute? What does it look like? And so, uh, a few things, you know, when we had our joint, uh, city-county meeting a couple of weeks ago, I had added to the agenda a discussion about the housing policies and just reached, reached out to Nora at the planning office and said, hey, if you could just give us a paragraph or something that you have on hand that just outlines briefly the, the city's, uh, pad. And the response was basically, they had sensitivity to protocol, which I've never run into in my three years that council member asking for a paragraph on a housing policy they worked for two years on. So, I guess my first comment is, if we're going to get, uh, tight and sensitive about protocol, I, I do have a bit of a problem of city staff reaching out to some of our staff and I want to know if the administrator was involved in that. Because it, the focus on public transit feels very political to me. And I spoke to Zachariah about that, is being careful not to, not to be, uh, a cog in the wheel of, of some political works. So, that's, uh, number one. Number two, there are public transit light items in multiple original documents of the UDOT regional hotspot planning process. So, this idea that public transit is something that's just been cooked up out of nowhere or that the public transit, you know, study committee is, is, is pushing transit is frankly false. And so, uh, I'd like to continue to discuss this. And I think if, if we're starting to, if we have staff or if there's a message that we need to stop what we're doing for this regional plan to talk about transit, that's ridiculous because we've been talking about transit for two years. And this, I'm talking about outside of the park, not even getting into that issue. And this regional transportation plan, they've been, you know, prepping for that for a year and this thing is supposed to take potentially up to two years. And so, that's what I have to say about that at this point. And then I'm, I'm anxious to see how this ties into item N, M, excuse me.
Anyone else? Yes, Chris.
So, yeah, there's really, I think, four different topics, um, that are somewhat intermingled and in some cases, I think, being conflated. There's the regional transportation planning, which UDOT has indicated that they have resources available for. Uh, but then we've got our Grand County Transportation Plan, which we wanted to tie in with any regional transportation planning. And I think the city of Moab was interested in coming up with their own transportation plan and, and tying it in with our Grand County Transportation Plan. And, and so, um, then those are, so those are two issues that are, that are intermingled and probably should be connected. Um, and then there's these satellite issues. There's the hotspot funding and then the, uh, transit authority activities that are sort of satellite to these two main planning efforts.
I'm clear on that.
And so, yeah, and so, uh, there's four, really four kind of things happening. And so, I just wanted to make it clear that, um, the main ones in my mind are, uh, the regional transportation planning with UDOT and, and the county's update of its transportation plan.
The regional transportation plan that this is referring to, that, that, those talks have been in the works for over a year.
Yep, yep.
So, yeah, there are multiple lanes here, but I think when we, what I'm saying is when we wind up in a space where we're saying, we need to put everything on hold for this, or certain scoping of certain projects on hold for this process, that's not been the way things have worked since the UDOT hotspot program has worked out or really how we've been operating and been parallel tracking those things. And if there are projects that fit from hot, from the hotspot program into a long-term plan, then that's not been problematic.
I think it just underscores the fact to, to have that long-range plan, or regional plan, in place sooner than later. Because it seems like, uh, there's motivation to address things. And it would be nice to kind of have a big vision as we, uh, start taking them off the list.
Well, I would agree with that, but the, of the three bubbles in the flowchart are pointing to transit study and design. And I think that's probably what I'm catching is the regional transportation plan is a very wide scope.
Yeah.
And so, the flowchart going from, from those phases and then pointing direct, drilling down on public transit is the eyebrow raiser for me.
So, you have to understand how the, how UDOT process for funding and project management works. They have a statewide, uh, transportation improve, complete improvement plan. And, uh, getting on that plan as early as possible with any particular local project need is important because it oftentimes takes several years to work your way to the forefront of tho, of those plans. And so, um, in the past, we've, uh, you know, the, the road widening projects, the bridge, everything that's happened on the north end of town and, and some on the south is because we pushed to get those projects on the step. And so, it's important. And, you know, that's, I think, a big part of this regional planning, is to, to stay active and, and getting our projects on that statewide, uh, transportation improvement plan.
Thank you. Any, any other questions or comments? None? Okay. We are to, uh, agency reports. We do not have any agency reports. We are at Utah University Extension Report for two thousand and nineteen. Michael Johnson.
Thank you, everybody. I'm, uh, Michael Johnson. I'm the County Director for Utah State University Extension in Grand County here. Uh, Grand, Extension is an educational resource for the community. We provide research-based information in a number of topic areas, agriculture, horticulture, natural resources, family consumer science, and of course, run the four-H youth program. For me personally, horticulture is, uh, something that a lot of people associate with Extension. I have, uh, extent, a very extensive background in horticulture. So, I assist the community and, uh, helping to answer questions about problems that they're having in their landscapes, businesses, things like that. I also work with a lot of the landscape companies, landscape maintenance companies and others to assist them when they have problems with their clientele. And I'll go on sites and check it out and work with them. Of course, when there's issues that the community has concerns about, one of those that the community seems to, at times, get up in arms about are insect issues. And I've had calls this past year from the mayor's office, the Chamber of Commerce, a lot of hotels and stuff. Uh, the main topic was the, um, seed bug that's invading a lot of homes and, uh, hitting a lot of, uh, businesses and things like that. Not necessarily a damaging insect, insect, but a nuisance insect because of the large numbers of them. Of course, this past year, we had the periodic, I guess it's probably about every ten years, mill or moth, uh, invasion that really had people in uproar for quite a while. We put some information on the web and it was, uh, highly sought after and passed around. I did have the mayor's office call me, uh, concerned about a report that they had found the emerald ash borer in Grand Junction. And so, I checked with, uh, some fellow colleagues at the Colorado State University and it's still on the front range. It really hasn't moved in quite a, quite a few years. Of course, if it was to come here, it's a pretty devastating, it's a bore. It goes after healthy trees, all of our insect pests that cause damage boring into trees here or sec, what I would consider secondary pests, they only go after stressed trees. Of course, then there's the continuing issue with the pinion ebs beetle, which is going after stressed trees. The pinions, uh, probably has already taken out fifty percent in the four corner. Well, two thousand and two and three, it took out, uh, probably ninety percent in the far reaches of the Four Corners region, up to Monticello and maybe up to Villasalle Turnoff. Uh, now we're hit and we'll probably lose, I don't know, it's ongoing, it's been going on for about three years now, I would say fifty to seventy-five percent of the pinions I would expect to see die in the next few years. So, uh, just unfortunate, one of those unfortunate things. Uh, but agriculture is also another area that I work in. I brought quite a few specialists here into the county from campus to help and also contacted others by phone to help our producers. I also continue, uh, to offer the Utah Department of Ag and Food Pesticide applicator tests, uh, here locally. And so, we've had a lot of county departments, county weed department, mosquito abatement, Conservation Corp., cemetery, National Park Service coming to take advantage of that. Our four-H youth program is doing pretty well. Uh, we had, over the summer, we had fourteen clubs, we had twenty-three volunteers. Some of those were teen volunteers that helped lead the club, clubs. And it's always exciting to see teens take leadership roles such as that. Uh, we should ha, and we also work with the Beacon After School Program, providing programs. We should have a halftime four-H person, I'm hoping, in the next two months. It's been a little bit slow process getting them, but we're moving toward it. Uh, last year, we had Kristen offered some parenting classes. That's something that we've been doing for quite a few years, uh, various types. We had one of our specialists, uh, develop a curriculum, Strong Parents, Stable Children, and we've been giving presentations on that. And she also did some domestic violence presentations. Is, even though I'm considered a, most people would consider me an ag, port person, uh, because I'm the only agent in the county, I branched out. And so, I taught some canning classes, food preservation, become a minor expert in those types of things and offer assistance when people call me with canning questions and things like that. And also invited one of our, uh, county staff from Emery County to come down and do a presentation on food drying, uh, last year. One of the things that in the last twelve years I've been involved with is the V I D A program, the tax program. And so, we're in our twelfth year. Um, this is an IRS program. I have to be certified every year to offer this to the community. I'm currently doing that right now. I've saw, I think, thirteen people today. About every half hour, I have another person come in and help them with their taxes. Uh, this helps, anyone can come for this free service, that's under fifty-six thousand dollars. But the target is to help people that can get the earned income tax credit. Uh, that's a tax credit that's considered a, any poverty provision. It helps those pay, persistently pay low wages and oftentimes those that are just having hard times. And of course, the child tax credit and the credit for other dependents, which is also important for low-income families is it reduces child poverty. And research has shown increases of just even a thousand dollars can improve children's test scores. Uh, for this year, uh, this Grand County site was one of a hundred sites that was selected to work on a new document management tax preparation program by the IRS. And this is out of over eleven thousand, uh, V I D A sites in the nation, so that was nice. It's been a challenge getting it going, but we're happy to get it going. Now, we have the building slowly moving, slowly moving to being worked on. And I have some paperwork that, can I pass it around? Can I just hand it off and? And what you'll see here is, uh, this is as current, this is current as of Monday. Uh, I've been attending meetings for the last eight months on this. Uh, we are at the point now that hopefully. We're at the point now that hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be pushing it toward construction documents and getting bids. You'll see on the second page, this is a diagram of the current, how the, it's, in terms of the layout is going to look. If you look at this offshoot down here in the corner, this is the extension portion that Curtis and the council helped to get funds for from the state. We'll have an activity, what I'm, we're calling an activity space. We'll have a storage room, we'll have a demonstration kitchen, because I think it's time for Extension to move into other family consumer science areas such as health and wellness. We'll also have a few offices. You'll see these sections here in the middle, that's not extension, that's electrical room and a mechanical storage room. We'll probably end up, maybe, we'll have to wait till we get the bids out, but I'm guessing about 1,000 square feet will, what we'll end up with. So, that's it for me. I can answer questions if you have any.
Questions? Gabriel?
Yeah, I just, I have a few, few questions. First, with regards to agriculture in our valley, and from what I've seen, it's kind of more or less stagnated or even declined, specifically with regards to the local food system here and producers here that are able to contribute, be it vegetables, be it dairy products, all those sorts of things. Do you have a sort of a vision about how that could be promoted in our valley in the face of, of course, land costs being what they are, and sort of how we can develop and build, you know, that, that sort of system? So, we're shipping less, you know, hopefully shipping a little bit less in and enjoying healthier local food?
Yeah, that's not a simple, that's not a simple situation. What I have seen, especially in the last 10 years, we've had, we had a micro dairy here in this valley. We had a dairy over in Casa Valley. People moved into the area and to live in the country and could not tolerate those areas, and went after the producers. I was involved with both of those situations. I brought specialists down. We knew that there was nothing, the operators were operating perfectly fine, perfectly safe, up to code. People get it in their minds that they're just not going to tolerate it. And we had a group here that should have been very supportive in ag, that I didn't feel like was supportive of it, and so, you know, we've lost those. In terms of vegetable production, I mean, you know, I worked with Casa Valley Farms for years. They were probably the largest producer of local vegetables. In fact, when Jerry Harris was running the farm, he was sending out weekly like 5,000 pounds of tomatoes weekly in their greenhouse. It's extremely labor-intensive. It happened that, they were able to do it because they had the school there, because the people running it, Jerry, his brother, his parents, they were just seriously committed to it. I've worked with some other producers here, some of them that grew fabulous, grew fabulous vegetables. The problem is, it's not just growing them. You have to be a businessperson, you have to be able to work with the people that want to buy the product in a manner that makes them happy, and it still boils back down to, even at a couple acres, it's incredibly labor-intensive. Growing, I can put anything in the ground, I can make it grow, picking it, processing it, that's a whole different world. And you have to have people that, not only, I mean, what I have seen is we see the rise and fall of small vegetable production, especially in the last eight years or so, maybe 10 years. And a lot of it is, people get into it, they're very earnest in their desires to grow, and then they run up against the issues of labor, finding people to help. It's not something that a couple people usually can do. I mean, even for just a couple acres, you have to be able to find help, to get a process to move it. In Jerry's case, they took it upon themselves to ship it out, which, you know, we looked at options. I know there was some talk with some of the local distributors here as to whether they would take the produce and take it out, and that was just not something that seemed to go very far. So, what would it take? One, it would take land prices that are affordable to be able to put these operations on. It would take a community, especially those living right around these operations, that are going to be tolerant of them. Something like a vegetable production or something like that. Obviously, a lot easier to be tolerant of it than it is a micro dairy or anything like that. I mean, you can't get away from the fact that animals poop, and there's smells associated with that. I was around farms, I worked on farms, I don't find any of it problematic for myself. But, you know, again, it was, from my perspective, it was unbelievable, the, how strongly people went after some of these producers.
Yeah.
And so, something like that, I don't see that happening. I don't see any kind of micro dairy, not unless it was put out somewhere and there was, you know, enough space around it where people couldn't, you know, wouldn't move close to it. The vegetable production, I mean, you know, how are you going to find people that are willing to work at the wages that, that people can provide for that?
Yeah.
And a lot of the producers offered shares of the food. I mean, you know, we have community-supported bag and things like that.
Michael?
Again.
This is really interesting, I'm sure, but I, it's, we have a, we haven't even got to our actions items, so could you draw it to a close?
Yeah, so, yeah, I wish I had an answer for you. I've worked in it a long time, it's concerned me.
Yeah. And if I could just, excuse me, sorry. If I could just, just respond real quickly, and I, and I share your concerns and everything you're saying, definitely, you know, I, I understand those concerns as well. I just, I think that there's just, you know, there remains a lot of demand for locally grown produce. It can improve, you know, the wellbeing of our residents here, it can improve the visitor experience, and I think that there's still, there's a lot of people with enthusiasm and energy, and yes, it's definitely going to take in some innovative solutions, for sure. I guess I would just, my comment would be, I just would love to see, you know, your office look for any ways of sort of outreach and promotion, and in some way of sort of finding those solutions, and maybe if it's patch, more, greater patchworks and networks of backyard gardens, there's community garden initiatives that are expanding in town, you know, just building those, building on those ideas and perhaps, you know, in little ways, you know, maybe it's not, maybe it's a quarter of an acre at a time, rather than two acres at a time, you know?
I think the homeowner operations, people that have that, that have the interest, that would be the best way to have that happen.
Yeah.
And then come together in a co-op type situation.
Any other questions?
One other little question I have, is there, what is the cost for the children and the families for the 4-H programs? Is there any cost to participate in those programs?
The state charges $10.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just have a quick request, Michael. I sent a couple emails into USU because I needed some more information to be able to process that legislative appropriation, and I haven't heard back. You think you could bump them?
Yeah, I can. I think it was Brian that we determined needed to respond, right?
Yeah, and I haven't heard back, and so, it feels like it's getting pretty stale. I wouldn't want to leave a million dollars just laying there for too long, so.
No. I'll touch base with him.
So, we need the basic design and et cetera. I sent all the information I needed, but it's been like two or three months, and so...
Okay.
That's too long.
He may be, he may have been waiting on this to get finished, so...
All right, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we got that done.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. As mentioned earlier in the meeting, we have two citizens to be heard, one at the beginning of the meeting and one as close to 6 o'clock as possible. So, it is 10 after 6. Do we have any citizens to be heard? Okay, thank you. We are on our general action and business items, item J. Approving proposed 220 standard cooperative agreement for Utah State University/USU Extension Educational Work. Yes?
I would like to make a motion. I move to approve the 2020 standard cooperative agreement between Grand County and Utah State University to fund extension educational work in Grand County and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Jaylen Hawks, seconded by Evan Clapper. Discussion. Seeing none, I call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Love what you're doing, keep it up.
Thanks.
Item K, authorizing the Grand County Building Department to perform inspections on the new USU campus building, and if approved, to waive the inspection fees. Bill?
Okay, so, what we're asking is for the council to authorize us to do the inspections, typically it would run through the state, the department of, the division of facilities and construction maintenance, construction management. They don't do inspections, they farm them out to an engineering firm. The engineering firm typically calls me, has me do them as a private contract. If you see my disclosure form, it does state on there that we do inspections for state agencies, federal agencies, engineering firms, for this type of reason. We would like to keep the control in the county. And also, if I have to do it before work, lunchtime, after work, it slows the progress down on the project. If we can fit it into our schedule without stressing our staff, it makes it a smoother process. Where we don't have jurisdiction over the project, technically, it's in the city. The city doesn't have jurisdiction over it, we don't have jurisdiction over it. It would be through the state. The state would contract with an engineering firm, they would probably hire me, and just slow things down. It would put money in my pocket, but I would rather move the project forward. The fiscal impact is shown as 4,595.50. We base that off of 70 inspections. I don't think we're going to get anywhere near that. If we do 40 or 50 inspections, it's a pretty substantial amount. So, that's why we put it up to the 4,500. Again, that's money that wouldn't normally be coming in, it's hours that we would be spending doing those inspections. It's not like we're taking money out of the coffers, we're just providing services for that amount, up to that amount. And again, this is a two-part, one to authorize us to do the inspections, the other to see if we'd be willing to waive the fees for inspections.
Yes.
I like it. I like streamlining the project and keeping things moving forward, and I think it's a neighborly thing to do. Therefore, I would move to authorize the Grand County Building Department to perform all required inspections on the new USU campus building and waive all the associated fees, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Evan Clapper?
Say it.
Seconded by Greg Halliday. Discussion. Yes?
So, I, yeah, I agree with streamlining things. I'm curious as to why the city inspector turned this down. That's my understanding, that's my first question. So, go ahead with that one.
Okay, so, he didn't turn it down. I thought you had some concerns, so I asked them to provide a letter saying that they had, they had no jurisdiction.
Right.
And they had no resources to do it.
Oh, they had no re...
So, they don't, they don't have the, they don't have jurisdiction, and they don't have the resources to do what we're offering to do.
Okay. Well, and then my second question is, if DFCM is willing to pay an engineering firm to do this, and then they would contract a private inspector, why would they not be willing to just pay those minimum fee, minimal fees to Grand County? Because...
And, and there was conversation. We proposed waiving those fees. If the council decides not to waive those fees, we could charge them per inspection. And DFCM has a limited budget for those inspections, but could pay for those inspections.
Chris, do you think we could use inspection fees for some of our obligations that we've committed to the project? Like a trade?
Well, it wouldn't, this isn't towards the University of Utah that would be paying those fees, it would be the state paying those fees.
So, yeah, I think...
So, we're two different entities, and we just want to make sure that, that the Utah State University isn't asking us to waive those fees. We've offered to do those fees, to waive those fees if the council sees fit. If the council doesn't see fit, we can go back through DFCM, and then we're still willing to do the inspections, but we would charge at a rate of our normal rate of $65 per inspection.
Which shouldn't come out to any more than 4,500.
Yeah, that fee was, that fee was based off of 70 inspections. To put it in context, when we did that Houdoo Motel, much bigger project, over the course of four years, I think we did a total of 140-some inspections, so...
Do you have any thoughts on this, Chris?
Well, I talked with Bill about it. I think that what it comes down to is that Bill wants to make a contribution to the project, right?
Yeah.
And so, I, he says he's got the time to do it, and if that's what he wants to do, then, you know, it's not going to really cost us any money, and if he feels like he's got the ability to do it, then it's a contribution. I mean, all of the contributions we've made are already committed. The 525,000 is in escrow, and we've already signed the agreement for the remainder of that debt, and so, there's no way to really offset anything. But I think it really comes down to whether or not Bill feels like he can, you know, accomplish this, and it's definitely a gift to the project from Grand County. And so, I said, you know, my point of view is if you feel like you can do it and you want to do it, go ahead, and, you know, take it to the council.
So, the way I look at it is, my staff would probably be doing those inspections anyway. Either it's money paid from an engineering firm to us personally, in which case, we're limited on the hours that we can do those inspections, or we fit them into our schedule with all of our other inspections while we're out and about. It disrupts our office less by doing those inspections to the department. I would have to take vacation time to go do concrete inspections if they've got a truck rolling and need somebody out there, or they have to plan two days ahead for concrete.
Yeah, I understand that. That totally makes sense. I was just a little confused about the waiving of the fees, but it's an act of goodwill, and you have the capacity to do it in your department. Let's go for it.
Any other questions?
Aaron Thompson is with us, Utah State.
Aaron Thompson, I'm a representative of Utah State University today. I wanted to express our appreciation to the county for what you have done already, and just make it clear, as Bill said, that this, it's, we're not asking for more money, we're appreciative of what the county's done, so it's just more in local oversight, and, you know, the project is administered through DCFM, not Utah State University, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? We did have a motion, correct?
Yes, in a second.
In a second, okay. It's not seen, no, without any further discussion, I call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you for your generosity.
Thanks, Bill.
Approving the Community Wildfire Protection Plan for the area not covered by the Moab Valley Fire Protection District and the Grand County Superior Casa Valley Fire Protection postponed from February 19... Protection postponed from February 4th, 2020. Ms. Bailey.
And I do want to apologize for not being here two weeks ago. We had packed our suitcases and headed for Salt Lake. I had a family member with a tumor that they had to take biopsy, and based on our family history, we kind of figured we knew what that was, and we got to Price, got a phone call that was benign, and turned around and came home. So that was, that was good. So I, I apologize, but we're appreciative of that. We presented the draft and a finished copy of the plan to you. I've heard no comments from anyone, and we passed this through all the officials at State Lands Office, and other than that their names have to be under their signature, we incorporated everything that they asked us to do. So, other than that, unless you've got questions, I would ask you to approve this, and we'll get the signatures and get it done.
I, uh, I didn't see it here, maybe I missed it, and I don't know necessarily the best place that it would fit in, but we have the partnership with, uh, Western Colorado that kind of covers the west water to the-
With lower valley?
Yeah.
Right.
Um, there was one spot where it called out all our partners and they weren't listed there, and I was just curious if it was listed somewhere else and if that's something that should be included.
We definitely have the agreement with them, and we, they definitely do that. Why it's not there, I'll have to go back and look, but I'd be glad to add that in there. If like that done.
Yeah, I'd like to document that we're just kind of covering our bases.
That would be an easy fix to just add that in there.
Great.
Yeah, they, they've been out three times the last two weeks for it, so.
Really?
Fire season is here.
Getting our money's worth out of them, let's say, if you-
Yeah. Unfortunately.
Yes, Greg?
Yeah. I looked through this extensively. A couple of the issues that I see is the areas outside of the two fire districts that actually tax the residences.
Correct.
How are we going to fund anything in outside those areas?
My answer to that is that we need to form a third district and do that, so that there's tax money and, and this coun, that council can then levy a property tax and use that money to pay-
Yeah, we looked at that, and then we came down to expanding the two existing districts to pick up the majority of the area. And I was talking to Castle Valley last night, and they are looking at that seriously to expand their district numbers. And I think Moab is looking somewhat as well, at least they were looking at, at least going up in the Bronx. So I don't know where that sits right now with, with Moab. I know Castle Valley is looking at that.
And that would be taking the existing districts and expanding them, be the legal challenges of, of the wording in doing that, but-
Annexing.
Annexing, yeah. And that would be one way of doing it, yes.
Chris?
Well, yeah, we've been talking about it. I think part of the struggle, Rick, is that the laws have changed, and if you establish a service district, you can, you can pass a bond, a GO-type bond, which can be subject to a property tax, but only for equipment and capital purchases, but not maintenance and operations. And so what we're really talking about is maintenance and operations or contract, contracting with the existing districts to do that, which is why it led us down the road of looking to expand the existing districts who already have taxing ability for maintenance and operations. And so that was kind of the big hiccup, I think. And so, yeah, when, when I get some, some time here, I'll, you know, touch base with TJ, and I already talked with Castle Valley, and they are interested in, in doing an annexation. And so in my mind, that's the easiest thing to do, and if that fails, then we'll move to Plan B.
There, there definitely is a fair, a fair way to do that, and if we can do that, that that makes sense to me, too.
Yeah, and so, you know, it's sort of, you know, some component of a soft negotiation this year with Moab Valley Fire, so with regard to the money that we're sending this year, so I think that hopefully we'll make some progress on that.
I'd be glad to assist in any way I can there, Chris, so.
Thanks.
What was the name of the Colorado?
Lower Valley Fire Protection District.
Evan?
I would like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I move to approve the community wildlife protection plan for the area not covered by the Moab Valley Fire Protectin', Protection District and the Grand County Service Area for Castle Valley Protection postponed from February 4th, 2020, to include the edits of including lower bas-
Valley.
Valley where appropriate and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Evan Clapper.
Second.
Seconded by Greg Halliday. Any further questions or discussions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, if I might be, on March 20th, we're getting close. Team Rubicon and their volunteers will be here in the valley. They're going to start coming on the 19th, but the 20th is the first day. Be 300 of them coming. They'll be out at the arena. There'll be, Red Cross is going to be sheltering, showering, and feeding them with the assistance of Southern Baptist, Church of Scientology, and some other groups. Any of you that would like to come out and see that operation, it's, it's not open for the public, but we would be glad to have you come out, and we would take you on a tour and show you what they're doing.
So they're-
This is a great organization.
So they're starting on a Sunday?
Uh, October, or March 20th is, is the date.
So, uh, excuse me, I-
Right. And, and Madam Chair, at six o'clock, they're having the welcome to everybody, and they have invited you, or representative of the council, to come out and spend a few minutes welcoming them to come out.
This is very exciting, so yes, I'll be there, or Chair, or Vice Chair, or someone will be there. It's on March 20th at six o'clock.
Six PM, yes. The arena, that's the kickoff, and they're going to work shortly thereafter, so.
This is, we're very fortunate to have Team Rubicon come to our valley.
This is a national event for them, so we're kind of excited to see it.
So we're going to get a lot of fire mitigation done without-
You bet they are.
The cost that would normally, I'm very excited about it. So thank you, yes.
You bet. Thank you.
At the arena, six o'clock on March 20th. Thank you. Our next discussion, possible action item, discussion of the transportation needs of the valleys and consider temporary ceasing all meetings of the ad hoc Moab Transit Authority Study Committee until determining how to move forward. The main reason I brought this up is I'm getting a lot of calls from newspapers asking why they're not on our website, why they can't find minutes, meetings, agendas, and then they just received a GRAMMA report. And with those, I just think we need to, if we choose to move forward and have something like the Moab Transit Authority, I would first of all like to change the name to a Moab Transit Study Committee, or something that takes the word authority out because it, it gives it a, they're more of a brainstorming group, a planner, a big-picture type group, and authority gives it a different idea, and also go through the process of creating a, you already started a resolution, didn't you say, when I talked to you on the phone?
Well, Christina kind of connected with me via email. I think my interest is if, if we're going to formalize the group, I'd like to contribute to that resolution, because I hadn't been contacted at that point, wasn't aware of the GRAMMA request, really wasn't aware of any arguments or need to not allow them to move forward.
Yeah, it was, it just, it started, all right, Michael, right before Christmas, I started getting a lot of questions, and it really ramped up. And then with the GRAMMA report, I just think we're in a situation where we really need to make it a formal committee, that we can do the Open and Public Meetings Act, have the, have the agendas online, have the meetings, have the minutes, just follow that if people are this, you know, have their eye on it this much.
So, you know, like originally when this started, there were comments that we, you know, people didn't want them to be a formally recognized committee because of concerns about varying opinions pertaining to arts as national park issues and how transit fits into that. So when we started this, there was this sentiment that let's keep them kind of JV and make a think tank out of it. And we have a, a couple of the members now in attendance, and so I, I wouldn't mind inviting them to weigh in at the, at the, you know, if they would like to. So, but I mean, they've been doing a really good job, and we've got a city council member that's, that's contributed to that, and there's never been any problem, you know, or issue with, with the work that these folks have done. And so I'm not quite sure where the concerns from, I'm interested to hear more about the concerns or arguments to potentially not allow them to move forward, or, or what that's about. And if, if the interest from the council, or you, Mary, is that, oh, they need to be formalized, well, then let's do it, and that's a pat on their back, because that means the work that they're doing is, people are interested in it, and it's being recognized. And so I think that's a, you know, a good thing for these folks, but that's definitely a different sentiment than, than the way the committee was originally approached. And so I'm, I'm all for that, but I'm not quite sure, you know, what the, the nature of the GRAMMA request is and what the speculation is there. I've just got a lot of questions. I'm not clear, it seems kind of heavy-handed, you know, to, to basically word it and say, do we really want to move forward with this? And then on the other hand, say, well, we need to, you know, make them public meetings in a way that insinuates that there are issues with transparency or something. If it makes more sense to formalize, and, you know, all the better.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the transparency comes from that side. It's just that the people, you know, there's just been interest, and people are questioning it, and they're wondering why they can't find it anywhere.
Yeah.
And so, and then, you know, I don't know what the GRAMMA request was for, just to ask for minutes and, and-
Yeah, I don't know, have no idea what they were looking for. They were just asking for minutes and agendas.
I just think, I think once, once we're getting this kind of interest in a, a committee, it's important for us to cross our Ts and dot our Is and make sure that it's transparent, even though it's, you know, it's been transparent to the public, it hasn't appeared so, because they can't find when the meetings are, they can't find all the type of stuff, you know. I think some of the people that were interested were looking to see, find out when the meetings were, and were they on a regular basis, what was going on. So if we, I think it would be, prove us at this point to suspend the meetings until we have it officially created, and then we can move forward with that if we want. But I think at this point, I just don't want to see the county get in trouble for lack of transparency. Yes, Chris?
So I don't know if, if Christina agrees, but we received a previous legal opinion from Andrew Fitzgerald that indicated that all of our boards and committees need to comply with the Open Meetings Act. And so that's an issue, and if Christina agrees, then that probably should remain the case. There is a-
I absolutely agree, yes.
So there's a larger issue that, that doesn't pertain just to this, but to really all of our boards and committees, and that's the question of their, of their autonomy from the council, and whether or not they're, they should be allowed to offer opinions or comments to planning processes or deeper processes or anything like that. I remember when I was the liaison to Trail Mix, for instance, there'd be some EAs that would come up on federal lands and whatnot, and I always advised that Trail Mix, if they have a, some opinion or comment that they'd like to make, that they route that through the council, and that any kind of, you know, official opinions or comments to planning processes should go through the council. And I don't know if the council wants it to be that way or not, and if they, and if they would like those kinds of things to come through the council, then it's really a broader topic. It doesn't just apply to this, it applies to all of our boards and commissions.
Yeah, so for instance, right now, we have the Audit Committee, three council members, not public meetings.
Yeah, and that one's a little different because it's dealing with, any, I mean, in the, in the, in GRAMMA, actually, there's a, a component in there that establishes that audit-style actions and information are protected until they're complete. And so once there's a finding, then it becomes public, but through the process, it's protected. And so, and that's to protect the process itself.
So this is a good thing. We just need a resolution to formalize the committee.
And you want bylaws, don't you? What, like, you're looking-
Yeah, bylaws. I've been concerned about this one. I also have gotten complaints, but it's been on my radar, but I haven't been able to spend time on that. But just the name, Transit Authority. Transit Authority is its own decent law. This is not a transit authority, so the name has troubled me, but yes, you know, and that's something I've done slowly, is start to make bylaws more formal for all of our committees. And I have also advised all those committees, when questions have come to me directly, it's after what Chris said, that all of those committees should be routing opinions and letters through the council, and, you know, the formality of the bylaw process and all that documentation helps those committees understand that. But in talking with Curtis and also Mary about this and about intentions to do that, I think that there was a larger discussion going on, too, that we haven't brought up, which is, does it make sense to continue the work of this group, which, you know, when I talked to Joe Kingsley in the last week, who said, you know, there's been many thousands of hours put in, many, many thousands with these groups. And now we have this, you know, regional transportation plan that might narrow down into transit planning. We have, I believe, a city-county hotspot funding committee that is forming currently. Does it also make sense to have this, that third, you know, for you guys to decide?
I think that, so the name authority, I can understand, consider that. The way that came about, I don't know whose idea specifically was eventually there, but it is common, public transit systems are referred to as authority of entities or public trans authorities, so it was just a public transit authority study committee, basically studying what would eventually be-
Yeah, it's called a study group.
Not that it's currently an authority, but I, I can, I can understand that.
When, in your recommendation, it is considered a study group?
Yeah.
As its specific purpose to explore public transit.
And they've gone into, I mean, a number of things, you know, different projects and concepts, from three to five different, you know, amazing applications, so it's not been specific. I've actually never been to a meeting, but-
So anyway, I would entertain a motion.
Uh, you know, I think that they have done strong work. I appreciate them, their willingness to tackle issues with the parks. I like that they were looking at rail and alternative transportation, and I would like to give them a pat on the back and formalize it a little better. I think that it's a good point that there's a kind of multiple parallel kind of committees and groups and brainstorming happening, and I could see the benefit of having a, a more formal group that could address things for, I mean, it even says Moab, it doesn't even mention Grand County. But to that effort in, in propping it up and strengthening their voice and their vision, I would move that we temporarily cease all the meetings of the ad hoc until determining how to move forward in a stronger, cleaner way that will set the county in a good position.
I'll second that.
Is that, is that? Okay, I just thought maybe he wanted to use more words. Okay, or different words I didn't-
I get a little ramblid.
So anyway, it's the motion by Evan Clapper to cease the meetings of the Moab Transit Authority- So anyway, uh, it's the motion by Evan Clapper to cease the meetings of the Moab Transit Authority until the committee is more formalized. Motion by Evan Clapper, seconded by Curtis Wells. Any further discussion?
Uh, who would spearhead the planning of how to, what would be the next move to formalize this better?
Draft a resolution that addresses the needs and concerns, you know, with the county attorney's office, um, to create the board somewhere like what they did with the budget advisory board and then add to the agenda. And, um, if the existing committee wants an opportunity to contribute to the resolution that defines the scope, you know, that's, I think that would be a, make it a collaborative process with the people who are in the committee. And then of course, council members, an opportunity to weigh in on the scope of what the script is and what we're going to call it and what we're going to do. And vote on it.
Does that answer your question?
Sounds like you were willing to-
That's what I wanted. I wanted shit.
Okay, we, we, I-
No further discussion.
Jessica, Jessica, what would be helpful for me is the preferred name, the purpose and scope, and how the membership would work.
Okay, I will, I will work on it.
Michael, we have to vote because now we've had the motion on the board, we've had a second. So right now it's opposed to the council. And then after our vote, I can, you can contribute.
Cool.
Uh, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five in favor. Uh, Jaylen Hawks for-
Comment?
Yes.
Uh, whoever wrote this up, they put the new airport manager's name on there.
Well, that's not written up. That's from, uh, eight, two thousand eighteen.
Here, Mike.
Yes, Michael, did you have something?
Yeah, should I go up there?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just take a minute.
Yeah, just take a minute.
I mean, if this is the last word on our committee, I just want to thank you. And we, I think we have the committee like a year and a half. We had ten meetings. And just on a personal note, we had an amazing committee. I mean, for me, I've made like incredible friendships. There's, I mean, what we brought together was an incredible group of people in this county. Joe was the vice chair. And, you know, Joe's a nuclear physicist, so when you ask about rocket science, we actually had one. And Karen was on our committee, Judd was on our committee. He's amazing. He's now a professional airport planner. We had Elaine from the Travel Council. And we had, then we had Cindy Hargrave from the Canyonlands Natural History Association, and then Zachariah. And I think, I think the benefit of this committee is that, you know, you guys are really busy and like this agenda is huge and Zachariah has like so many hats. So when you have a group of people who are out of the day to day and can just think about stuff, stuff comes to the forefront that wouldn't happen normally. For example, the regional transportation plan came out of our committee. Because Zachariah's like really busy and then we're going into these issues and he's like, wait, we need a plan for this. So just so you know, the regional transportation plan came out of our committee, the impetus of the ideas. And it's actually not transit, it's a misnomer. The regional transportation plan is a US 191 plan and how all entities interact with 191. And originally they wanted to throw transit into it, but it was too complicated, so it got thrown out. And then rail came out of our committee, which we thought, you were crazy, Joe. But he wasn't so crazy. There's a senate bill now on rail. I mean, it's amazing. And then the Arches shuttle system actually was the impetus for a whole transit system. So like what our next meeting was going to be about, just to give you an idea of how a committee like this can contribute. So right now, the technical plan is we hire a consultant to do a transit study. But, I mean, I've hired a lot of architects and engineers. And if you don't give them good marching orders, then you don't really get the results you want. For example, when UDOT spent, was it one-fifth or three-hundred thousand on the, um, bypass plan? There's nine proposals, only one we're interested in, nine we're like, whatever. So if you can actually have a group of people thinking, what do we actually want? So then test our idea and then come up with the other ideas. For example, we've spent time on 191, timing the routes. There could be twenty-seven stops. How do you narrow that down? You know, how long is the stop? Instead of just a normal plan that would look at a forty-passenger bus, Joe, like was sending emails, we could have like rickshaws, we could buy used buses and paint them really cool and funky because, okay, I'll just end, but I just want to- Like if Moab is a cool place, people are on vacation and they want to do something cool. So it takes people thinking out of the box to have a fun bus you actually want to get on, rather than some boring city bus. So that's just an example of how a group out of the normal flow can contribute ideas to you guys. But mainly, thank you very much, and I've had a blast. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Approving volunteer appointment to districts and county boards and commissions, uh, the Budget Advisory Board. Chris Bear.
Okay, so the Budget Advisory Board had their first meeting right before this meeting and recommended Zach Wuchesik for the citizens' slot on the Budget Advisory Board.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the, the reappointment of Jack Wuchesik.
Zach.
Did I say Jack?
Zach.
You got his last name right though.
I was looking at the last name. Zach Wuchesik, now I can't say the last name, to serve on the advisory board, Budget Advisory Board with term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, which is two years, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Jaylen Hawks, seconded by Gabriel Boitek. Uh, discussion?
He does a great job, we should keep him on.
Thank you to have him.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passage unanimously. We are now to the consent agenda. Is there any consent agenda that someone would like to hold? Okay, is there different? Okay, consent agenda. Ratifying the vice chair's signature on a cover letter sent to six legislators attacked, uh, attaching, uh, resolution number three twelve two oh eight in support of ratifying the equal rights amendment to the United States Constitution. Approving affirmative response letter to the Bureau of Land Management, BOM, to participate as a consulting party pursuant to section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act regarding the travel management plan for Labyrinth Gemini Bridges, Bridges travel management area. Approving letter from the Key Leaderboard regarding intergenerational poverty and plan. Approving an independent contractor agreement with the Incremendo Development Alliance in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars paid with the bear funds for training regarding small scale and infill development. Approving a single event permit, local consent, and application for retail beer license for the annual Canyonlands PRC, a Professional Rodeo Cowboy Association rodeo held at Old Spanish Trail Arena on June fifth, sixth, and seventh of two thousand and twenty. Approving the adding of the project to the already approved CIB project list, Airport Improvement Program runway three twelve A R C, Airport Reference Code.
Eric, you said three twelve, it's three twenty-one.
Okay, three twenty-one. A little dyslexic there.
Okay.
Uh, Phase Two at a cost of approximately sixty thousand dollars on a total project cost of approximately one million. Approving the scope of work for Jones and DeMille Engineering for Arbor and Heckler Road Improvement Project material testing in an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand. Yes?
I vote to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Evan Clapper, seconded by Gray Halliday. Discussion. Jaylen?
Yeah, I had concerns about agenda item R. First of all, that there was no exhibit A in the packet. So I do realize we have on the dais, the, the new contractor agreement with a lot of edits. Is that because it didn't get to you in a timely manner?
This was the infill development one?
Uh, yes, yes. Oh, yes, please.
Um, the reason that the, um, the reason that the contract has so many red lines is because we had used an old version of the independent contractor agreement. So Christina was bringing it up to the new version. It's just still in there as red lines rather than, um, just having redone it.
I guess my point would be it's, it's frustrating to, to get an agenda, consent agenda, no less, approval item that refers to exhibit A and there's no exhibit A. So how can we possibly approve that? So I'm glad to see it on the dais and it would be great to have, you know, closer to a final version before it gets to us. But I realize things happen and appreciate your efforts on this.
Sorry about that.
I'll also say that, um, the contractor form that I drafted is a choose your own adventure and says multiple options and all of the departments are struggling with it. And so, um, when I see an independent contractor with review requests come in, I think, oh, that's going to take five minutes and they've all been taking longer. This one especially because, um, CED didn't have the current form. But I need to do a training with department heads on that independent contractor form and I haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Christina, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass the unanimous. Uh, discussion item, discussion of UDOT recreational hotspot downtown parking structure. Council member Curtis Wells.
Okay, thank you. Um, the intent of the discussion item is the city has their discussions and their actions that they're taking. But based off of the, uh, feedback that I had gotten from the joint meeting, there was a lot of questioning regarding how UDOT would respond to, uh, a step back from the existing project that the city's engaged with on behalf of the Arches region and the flexibility that we have within that program to select another project. So I had, I had Tara add to the dais item B, which if you haven't read it, you should.
Is that what you're, you know?
Yes, and so that is a, uh, I had a phone conversation with the, the Transportation Committee, excuse me, the Utah Transportation Commission Chairman, Nagi Zanotti, who's also our region representative on that board, um, the afternoon of the joint meeting, to explain to him kind of the discussions that we're having and, and to hear directly from him, um, and his role in the Transportation Commission, what flexibility exists if we have not reached consensus and if the city should decide to disengage with the downtown parking structure. And so, you know, essentially, this is an email in response to that conversation that if you read it, and I'm happy to read it into the record if that's helpful, um, or if council just wants to discuss it. But primarily the concerns were, well, how does UDOT feel? Would they be supportive of that? And this, uh, uh, response, um, from the chairman of the Transportation Commission, I think adequately and directly addresses those concerns and questions.
So it's, it's short, so why don't you just read it? I think that's useful.
Okay, so it's dated, uh, the email was sent to me February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty at one fifty-five PM. Dear Councilmember Wells, thank you for your email of Thursday, February twentieth, regarding the recreational hotspot funding. The Transportation Commission and UDOT understand there are challenges when developing projects that meet the criteria of the hotspot funding and garner the support of the community and local leadership. UDOT and the Transportation Commission want all parties to be successful in any project that is carried forward. UDOT and the Transportation Commission support a collaborative process to define a project that meets the requirements of the recreation hotspot funding and has consensus support from the community and local officials. We understand there have been questions regarding timeframe for delivering a hotspot project and would like to offer additional time of up to six months to work through the project selection process. Please work towards the goal of having a project defined by September first, twenty twenty. The region for leadership and staff are eager to offer technical assistance to help the process move forward. Please let me know if you have any questions. And so I, just in conclusion, this addresses the argument that it's a use it or lose it. This addresses the argument that we don't have time. The original stakeholder group was given a six-month timeframe to scope through projects with technical assistance from UDOT. So they basically attacked another, uh, uh, same timeline on, for us at this point to basically revisit the scoping process. There's been multiple lists of projects that were scoped out by the original stakeholders group in addition to the, uh, UDOT staff. And so we would not be starting at scratch. Um, we would have that list to work off of. We could enhance that list, add projects. There's a lot of flexibility there. UDOT staff has indicated that in regards to public transit, um, uh, they've got a lot of data from their studies and analysis from the Springdale Zion Shuttle System that was funded fifteen million through the same program. And so if, if that group decided to, uh, the city and the county acting collaboratively decided to, to explore that, that data would be made available. And they have a consultant that, um, that specifically brings a, an expertise on that subject. But there are a wide range of projects that are on that list from the original stakeholder group, including public transit among dispersed parking, bike trail projects, numerous things. And so I think at this point, it's kind of respecting the city's, uh, you know, process to determine what's the best, you know, path for them. But so much of the discussion has been, let's not justify the expenditures of this money on the downtown parking garage. Let's instead speculate on how UDOT feels. Um, the same, the same statement was sent to the mayor of the city of Moab, Emily Neehouse. Um, and so I just, in discussing with you councilmembers, wondering how UDOT reacts to this, wanted to share this with you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Kind of the, it was kind of the crux for me, you know, this sort of question. And, um, I really, as you had mentioned, respecting the autonomy of the city to make a decision in terms of what their, you know, the costs that they've incurred and how they're moving forward. Um, but just, uh, really looking forward to a project here that, um, everyone can really rally around, that isn't creating such polarization. Um, and, you know, even if that means we bring a bunch of projects together, to, to the table and the Transportation Authority still says parking structure, well, let's decide that we're going to rally around that if that's what happens after six months. And if that's what the city decides, you know, they decide they're, they're prepared to do, to sort of reopen the, the conversation.
I, uh, looked up their parking management study. And when I, I, I made a copy of the one page that the parking structure is discussed on. And it's, it is one of the alternatives that were presented as a possibility to deal with dispersed, uh, parking and such in the area. So, you know, I think if you want to have it around, I just have a couple. Uh, so, you know, because they're, you know, I got the impression that it wasn't, it wasn't one of the ideas that were in the study and it is. And, uh, so I just wanted to make that on record, that it is a part of the study to build a parking garage. As a person who's lived here a long time, my main concern is, it reminds me so much of what happened in the eighties when we wanted to do the bypass. And we could have. It would have been a pretty doable project. And people moved along and got kind of ready and things were looked at. And then at the last minute, there was a lot of, oh no, this is going to hurt businesses. This is going to do this and this is going to do that. And I just hope we're not going down the same rabbit hole. That we're, uh, not looking at this as that, yes, maybe a parking structure might not be needed right now, but in the future, will it be? And so that is, it's just, it's reminded me of that, uh, the reaction that people put a lot of energy into the bypass in the eighties that fell apart. And now we're wishing it hadn't. Just historical perspective. Anyone else have a question?
So I've been a bit puzzled over this whole thing, mainly because of the fervor with which not building the parking structure is gone after. My brain is not thinking tonight. Can't speak. It's just surprised me that, that the only, the reasons I'm hearing, and I consider myself a fairly rational, open-minded person, but the reasons I'm hearing for proceeding with the parking structure are, you know, one, we might lose the funding, two, we don't have enough time, three, we're too far down the road. In my mind, those three reasons are not good reasons to go ahead and build a parking structure when you don't have, you know, anything even close to consensus. And so those questions have really been answered there. And I'm not hearing any other good reasons why the parking structure should be built. It's all been focused on those other three issues. And if I were presented with some good reasons why it should continue to be built, I, you know, probably consider them. But I'm not hearing those. And there have been plenty of opportunities. And I have been to meetings of the city council and joint meetings with the two councils. And I still have not heard a good reason why it should proceed. So I think this is, I think this is, it's good. I'm glad you shared that. I'm excited for the city to move forward and decide how it's all going to play out. And I would be happy and excited to be a part of that discussion, so that's my thought.
Now, haven't they signed two contracts? That's what I heard at the joint meeting. So anyway, that would, to me, would be a concern. If I was a body and signed some contracts, to break contracts is always, it's a difficult thing. I mean, it's a difficult thing. And I, and I, I wish the city luck. I hope they can work through this and come out of it in a real cohesive manner.
You know, my response to that is, being that this is the potential to be the largest grant in the history of local government, or one of them, my concern is that there's all these talking points, you know. And the reality is, is where this thing left, the collaborative process was at fifty thousand feet. A west structure, east structure, downtown improvements, dispersed parking, and respecting that a majority of the work needs to happen downtown. Now that they're trying to land this thing and it lacks the support, and I believe it lacks the support of, you know, majority of both boards on the local government, it would be a shame to waste the money on a project that doesn't address an immediate need or doesn't stack up to alternative projects that meet the criteria. And as the chairman of the commission states, would achieve the highest and best use for the funding. And so I see it as a good opportunity. And as Jalen said, you know, would look forward to re-engaging with city folks to actually deliver some projects with this funding that we worked hard for in a collaborative way, from beginning to end.
Any further discussion? Okay, calendar items? March eleventh? Is on, is on or?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm adding that.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll just have to ask. Okay, we are now moving to, there is not a public hearing, so Grand County Municipal Building Authority.
Can you recess the council meeting and call the order of the MBA?
I, I would like, entertain a motion.
Second.
A motion by Jalen Hawks and seconded by Evan Clapper to recess our general meeting and move to the Grand County Municipal Building Authority meeting.
Aye.
Oh, I'm trying to find it. Okay. All in favor? Thank you, thank you. Aye. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you.
I'm with you.
You can tell us, it's been in, we've been in it for three hours now.
Well, there might be the option, Robert's rule is to recess by acclimation, which could be an easier way of doing it.
Okay. So we are in recess. Calling to order the Grand County Municipal Building Authority Special Meeting, Wednesday, March fourth, 2020. The time is seven oh seven. Present are Gray Halliday, Jalen Hawks, Evan Clapper, Curtis Wells, Gabriel Whitett, Mary McGann, attorney Christina Sloan, county administrator Chris Baird, and county clerk auditor Quinn Hall. Approval of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of Tuesday, January twenty-first, 2020.
Motion by Evan, seconded by.
The president to sign.
Seconded by Jalen Hawks. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. None, no, there are not, there are not any presentations, discussion items, none, action items. Approving an agreement for municipal advisory service from Zion Public Finance, Inc., Chris Baird.
All right, so our general agreement for municipal advisory services with Zion's expired December thirty-one. And I'm not quite prepared to re-engage in that general agreement. So I negotiated with Alex Buxton this single agreement for the EMS building project. And so basically what Alex would be doing is coordinating between the CIB, their bond counsel, our bond counsel, EMS, et cetera, to make sure that this entire project all gels and comes together and facilitate. There's quite a bit of, you know, our bond counsel's up in Salt Lake, CIB's up in Salt Lake. It's kind of nice to have somebody up there who's able to coordinate these things. And so I think it's especially important since we're, I'm transitioning from clerk auditor and Quinn's training, that we have this service available to make sure this project and the loan closes without any hitches. It's also been factored into the CIB loan. And I actually negotiated a price that's lower than our general, our previous general agreement, if you did the math on the, on the fees associated with a loan and a grant this size.
I move to approve the agreement for municipal advisory services with Zion's Public Finance, Inc., Incorporated, and authorize the president to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Jalen Hawks. Seconded by Evan Clapper. Discussion.
I know in Agenda Review, we talked about the ten thousand dollar purchase agreement thing. And maybe we would offer them nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. What happened with that?
The MBA is a separate entity from Grand County. I'm not aware that it really has a purchasing policy. It probably should, but you have to realize that the county's purchasing policy doesn't necessarily apply to the MBA. It's a separate political subdivision. It's also a, an actual incorporated entity with the state of Utah. It's a Department of Commerce. And so it's, it's partly political subdivision and partly nonprofit entity.
Other questions? Christina, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We. We are now on Item C, approving the notice of a request for proposals for the emergency medical services building, Chris Baird.
Andy, you want to come up with this? So Andy's been working with Jones DeMille to come up with this RFP. And they're using the Design Assist Construction type of RFP. And maybe I'll let you, Andy, kind of go over how that works and what you've come up with.
Sure, so the idea of the process and the Design Assist is very similar to what the Design and Build process is. What it allows the architect to do or the contractor to do, which is in this building, in this case, is to contract, sorry, before the construction documents are complete. And that allows the contractor to be on board previously going to bid, which means that you guys actually do the same process. But what it actually allows you to do is to get that, get the contractor engaged before design's done, to get pricing, so the project scales down. Instead of bidding it out and it comes out at ten million and you only had five, now we'll be much closer when you go to your final construction pricing process. This is a process that's used all over in many different municipal situations, particularly construction. But it's a little different because the architect is taking, or the engineer is taking, you got the architect and the organization. So that's kind of the process that Jones and DeMille prefers in their engineering services. So they put that proposal together, the RFP, and they're ready to put it out there to some contractors on board.
So I do have one caveat. The CIB is going to require a guaranteed maximum price. And if there are any overages over that, we are going to, as the MBA, have to guarantee to meet those overages, which in turn means that we will have to first sign an agreement with the EMS Special Services District that those overages will be covered respectively. And so we'll need to work that out and have it on the agenda prior to approving whatever bid the committee recommends in order to be secure that Grand County is not going to end up on the hook for any overages above that guaranteed maximum price, which is going to have to match the CIB loan and grant combination. So I'm fine with this as long as we get that in place first before we approve and engage in a contract for the Design Assist and Construction Agreement.
So the notice to proceed on the construction site comes after. So it's, once this is approved, it doesn't, in fact, I give you the approval of the contractor to come back to you folks after they've looked through and weighed in on the best options for that. But that contractor's really only initially contracted for the Design Assist process. What the RFP allows them to do is, if they provide the best value to the project, it allows essentially you folks, if you come back with the recommendation, you guys approve, that that contractor needs awarding based on their, on the best value to the project. So it reduces the amount of having to go back down for three days for another day of process. It allows you to keep that subcontracting process. But yeah, the guaranteed maximum, I know it's super steep and I didn't want the award.
So if we chose to do a motion, you'd want that part of the motion, correct?
Well, we're just noticing now, we're not establishing any commitment. But before, when, probably in the next meeting, after we close the bid, we're, I think we're scheduling April seventh to actual, to select the Design Assist. At that point in time, we would want to be also done with the agreement with EMS Special Services District and be ready to sign that. And, and so, Andy, you would, I'll probably need you to have your board get that signed first so that when we approve it here, we know that you've already signed it and we're in agreement then at that point. Then we can proceed with the award. But right now, all we're doing is approving the notice of this RFP.
Yes, I move to approve the notice that will be attached. Request for proposals for Grand County EMS Building as presented and authorize the president to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Jalen Hawks.
Second.
Seconded by Evan Clapper. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, we are, we are, there's not a public hearing, future consideration, there's not a closed session, so. No, but we have to adjourn this. We have to adjourn this. So we will adjourn this Grand County Municipal Building Authority Special Meeting and come out of recess for our general meeting.
At seven seventeen.
At seven seventeen, thank you. We are now opening our, our, we are now, I entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
For?
For pending or reasonably imminent litigation.
No.
Oh, purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of real property, including any form of water right or water shares.
Can we do both of them now? And? No, we can't.